Thank you, thank you, thank you, President Lee, and President Pledge.
Mr. Pledge, I pray to God, Father of heaven, we come before you now, asking first, to give us our hands. Lord, we want to ask that you walk over us tonight, as the board, and assistance to this county, if we do the business of county, and approve in this assessment tax rule. While we ask, again, to give us our hands, whatever we accomplish here tonight, we give you the honor and the praise and the glory. Welcome, Christ's name, and amen.
Amen. I declare the ladies to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, here to the meeting, to our second and final budget public hearing, and this is probably budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. What did Matt Damon say, coming up next, or is he here? I'm going to read the board to consider execution of certificates of non-avalanche. Let me say, let me hear your prayers, dear gentlemen, it needs to be a prayer.
Most of your prayers have been answered, yes.
Okay, we got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries, out of three. The board to consider execution of certificates of non-avalanche assessment, to approve the 2019 assessment laws for Warrior Creek subdivision, Ocean Pond subdivision, Deerwood at the Beaches subdivision, Strickland Landing subdivision, Oak Ridge State Unit One subdivision, Ballman subdivision, King Hackett Acres subdivision, Gulf Coast State subdivision, and Scarlet Bay subdivision, and to approve the 2019 solid waste assessment rule. The motion it is, and the second is just to approve the execution of these certificates for pass, each one of those rules.
I thought Lou.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Page, that's my Commissioner Kemp, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries. Okay, go ahead and read the next, that's, um, go ahead and read the next, I don't know if you can, but then I will listen to that one. Okay, all right, the board to hold the second and final public hearing on the millage and budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, set for this date at 5:01 PM. Um, okay, we have to advise the board and the public that the notice for tonight's meeting was advertised a Friday, that in the store stamp, in the local newspaper, here in Carroll. I think the next one would begin, and then the board would present it.
Uh, kind of, it's kind of brief, let's briefly talk about it, we talked about it last week. But, the, for the year 2019, there was a gross taxable value increase in the general fund of 4.81%. And in the MSTU, there was a gross taxable value increase of 5.98%. The board voted to adopt the proposed millage rate as tentative at last week's meeting, which is the same millage rate as the current year in the general fund, and increase the millage rate in the MSTU fund. The millage rate is 7.2426 mill for the general fund, and 1.2250 mill for the MSTU, for a total of 8.4676 mill. The rollback rate is millage rate, that would generate the same amount of avalanche tax provision as of prior year, based on the current year gross taxable values. As a result of an increase in gross taxable values for 2019, as well as the increase in the MSTU millage, the rollback rate would represent a millage rate decrease. If the board, without voting to go with the rollback rate, would have experienced a relative decrease because the values increased. The aggregate millage rate is 8.2695, and the aggregate rollback rate is 7.8484. The aggregate millage rate is higher than the aggregate rollback rate by 5.87%. And the total done hit for the 1920 fiscal year is forty-nine million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen.
Thank you, this is the public hearing, so I'll open the floor now for anyone who would like to come forward and speak. Okay, if there's no one from the public to come forward, are there any questions or comments from the board? Wow.
No comments, please.
Okay, all right, so the way we'll do this then is we'll vote on the, uh, general fund millage, and that is at 7.2426. Is there a motion to adopt the general fund proposed millage? Now, that's, that's the total, while, that she's, they're adopting the millage for the general fund and the MSTU set.
Okay, 7.2426.
Well, the 7.2426 is the general, you'll be doing all together? No, no, we have, we have a motion to take for the general one, for the, uh, MSTU. No, 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 that was, that was, um, I think it's at 8.46, I think that's the, go ahead.
I make a motion to the point, we adopt the general fund, 2.7.2426.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Murphy, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries. Now for the MSTU. 1.65 mill. Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
For a second.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Murphy. Murphy, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries. So that is the total millage of 8.4676. You combine the general and the MSTU. Say it, Deborah. Okay, um, now for the total proposed tentative budget of forty-nine million, seven hundred and sixty-two, six hundred and thirteen. Is there a motion? It is B. Um, it is B, on the back of the, the business. But, can I say there, the final assessment resolution for the office of the D? Sorry. That's the one I need to say what.
Okay, B, adopt final assessment resolution for Warrior Creek subdivision, Deerwood at the Beaches subdivision, Ocean Pond subdivision, Strickland Landing, Strickland Landing subdivision, Oak Ridge State Unit One subdivision, Ballman subdivision, King Hackett Acres subdivision, Gulf Coast State subdivision, and Scarlet Bay subdivision for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Okay, so, the final assessment resolution for Warrior Creek subdivision, Deerwood at the Beaches subdivision, and Ocean Pond is set at thirty-five dollars per lot, per year. Strickland Landing subdivision is at fifty dollars per lot, per year. Oak Ridge State Unit One subdivision is at forty-five dollars per lot, per year. Ballman subdivision is at eighty-three dollars and ninety-four cents per lot, per year. King Hackett Acres subdivision is two-hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-nine cents per lot, per year. Scarlet Bay subdivision is three-hundred and thirteen dollars and nineteen cents per lot, per year. And Gulf Coast State subdivision is three-hundred and twenty dollars and seventy cents per lot, per year. Okay, is there a motion to adopt these assessments?
No, second.
Okay, we got a motion in the second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries, out of three. Adopt solid waste assessment for fiscal year 2019-2020 at a hundred and forty dollars per year.
No, second.
Okay, um, motion from Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Page, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries, out of D. Adopt solid waste assessment for recreational vehicles or active RV power poles for fiscal year 2019-2020, and amount equal to one-third of other dwelling units, and the amount of forty-six, sixty-seven. Any discussion? Is there a motion to adopt this, um, solid waste, keep it beside the billiard?
No, sir.
Yes.
I heard the presentation, from, uh, an attorney down at Crofties, missed it last week, I believe he was there, well, I was there. And, I came away with it, with the thought that, before we, new year, in on the assessment, we'd be, we were doing stupid. Right, what you call a waste study. However, a waste study, I'm under impression across this county about thirty thousand dollars. And, where we gonna get thirty thousand dollars to do this study? I would, I would, uh, go for a motion to get the RV assessment, on the RVs and hunting camps, they increase it enough to at least this year, generate thirty thousand dollars revenue, save that stuff. And that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and have you figured out about how much that would be?
Well, I thought Daddy could help me, but if you, uh, if you, well, with the RVs and hunting camps, the same as everything else, that's gonna generate two-hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Now, if we went from one-third to one-half, what, would we generate, uh, twenty, this year, in spite of that stuff?
Okay, we'd be half of, um, two-hundred and two thousand.
We'd be at forty-six, forty-seven.
Low on it, was this amount set by county ordinance? Forty-six, sixty-seven was, okay, so you can't, you can't change the ordinance without going through the public hearing process.
There's a, there's a separate ordinance as it relates to hunting camps, that states that the assessment, probably one-third, uh, was charged for, for basically all other dwellings. So the ordinance that's in place, really, um, sets that as, as a one-third.
So that would have to be amended.
Yes, I believe so.
All right, and the, the then, then I would live, acting, when?
See, he's gonna have to certify every night, to, I have three days, three days to certify, from today. Ben, if, if this is the case, and we've been talking about this, for how mu- how long now?
About three years, I think.
And why was it waited until the night that we're gonna adopt this, for this to come back up, that we need an ordinance to do anything?
I'm sorry.
I'm not happy with that.
I'm not, I'm not.
Well, it's all right, it's right now, I know y'all, if it was done by ordinance, then y'all gonna have to amend the ordinance, or change the order, delay, or whatever you need to do with it.
All right, so we should amend it.
No, it's almost still what it's done.
Why, why don't we don't take any action on this tonight?
They won't see it.
They'll, they'll be free, right?
I would not, I mean, it, to have an ordinance, you gotta go, go change, or the, to change it, amend it. We deal with, do what you gonna do, you have to go through the same process as you do adopting any order. Have to talk to the public here, and all that. Well, if we want, if we wanna do something different, then we'll, we'll have to, uh, change the ordinance, actually, first, and then, uh, do it then. You can't do that, so y'all, unless you gonna decide to turn those, because property rights don't know what it is to turn up assessment, they ought to get back together, those motions go out, no them to talk. So I don't know what, anytime around the year that we decide to change the ordinance like this, we can't do it? You can't do it like, this way you're gonna do it, no? But we can do it. Well, you have to start early enough to advertise the public here for the ordinance, adopt the order, and then, and then, you, you're out, now you're five, five weeks time. Two, three, five, in three days, it goes to the property rights, tax question, we got the value judgment force, the property, to get through it, and that, that, that rule, you gotta be fine with, for, I think it's off over, two, three, six, seven, eight.
I thought the thing was set by a resolution, if you say ordinance, I think.
No, sir, that, the resolution sets the, by resolution, you can change to one-forty, to one-fifty-four, and then, the ordinance would apply, that would be raised, the ordinance for the hunting camps, that assessment would be raised to one-third of the one-fifty-four. But, you can't change, you can't, you can only change to one-forty to one-fifty-four, and then, the ordinance would apply to a third of the one-fifty-four.
And you knew just all this time, you knew all this time, that when we got to this point, that we didn't have an ordinance, that we couldn't do anything? Is that correct? Well, it's all right, it's, they don't even tell y'all. Hold on, I mean, I want to, I want to know, did you know that we needed an ordinance before tonight? Yes, ma'am, that's, that's something that we discussed, well, if it's not here, for anybody else out here, except for our clerk, and you. Did y'all understand that?
No.
No?
I did, I did, I'm careful.
Well, we told y'all before, the resident, on the resident, residential, we, when you adopt it last time, you're maximizing one-fifty-four. And you got from one-forty, one-fifty-four without changing the order, done by regulation, this one's not that one.
Well, I'm definitely not gonna go up over the one-forty.
I'm not either.
No, I'm not either.
That's, that's part of mine, for me, 'cause I got so many constituents that they're one-forty, don't understand why these people are saying forty-six.
I had a town hall meeting last Thursday night, a bunch of people were there, and they felt, again, they didn't want, they did not want us to go up on the one-forty, but they felt like it would be fair to do something else with the hunting camp. But, you know, we're sitting here, and the five commissioners didn't understand, but we had people that understood, that did not pass that information to us, and make it clear that that's what we needed to do, I am not happy.
Well, makes me feel like, we went to our town hall, and we went down to Crofties. Because, you know, whatever we learned there, it's not gonna be helped. I knew it would be a tough time, but I thought we could, we could do it by, by, by resolution. I understand, it's probably not called, uh, remember as well as a, you should.
I know this, I don't wanna spend thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars doing a study to see if we can do it or not. That's what we talked about in the meeting before, I'm not even, I'm not even storing money, you know?
Well, if we've learned to do it, we can't do it tonight.
All right.
Yeah, so we start with, with this year.
We start with one, with forty-six, six, seven, front of the year. We need to get it up some roads, make sure, everybody's got a kitchen, every house has got a kitchen, every person's got a kitchen. Next year, it needs to be different. I mean, that's just, that, that, they all put out some of their own groceries, it don't matter how many bedrooms you got, how many bathrooms, they all got a kitchen. Everybody's gonna eat, and they gonna have groceries, and they gonna baby dump, the trees that fall down in the yard, just so they live in a camp, so. They still gonna have trees, they're gonna cut down, and carry it to dump, all that kind of stuff.
So they believe something about, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars?
I mean, I don't.
And here's where we're sitting tonight.
My, it's, it's, it's my fault, when I was researching a little bit, I just wish we had researched it, talked about it a little more. But we've been talking since the year.
Going back to D, is there a motion?
I made a motion, they'll go ahead and say forty-six, six, seven, for this year, but we need to ma, we need to get it up some roads.
I second, but let me say this, I think it gets pointed to, uh, talk, nobody but the staff, maybe I should have had better understanding of the company anyway. I think, next year, when the time comes, you will have another way for those big, using RVs and hunting camps. I want to call three to two, I was well informed, but, like, okay, are we, we there now? So we, if our country's already in the, I don't wanna talk to nobody with that.
That's right, we, it, that's, that's right, we, we can't do anything about it now, but you know what? I don't have a half a day to wait, and I waited a half a day, and I'm off, and I got pretty other things I could have been doing. We got a motion in the second, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries, to D. About final budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, this is for the forty-nine million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen, is there a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
We got a motion in the second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'm, move, second.
We got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries.
Don't move, you got five.
Yeah, here.
You got five.
Yep. Only if that's true, say, yeah, yeah, I'm happy, I'm glad, I got it. Yeah, I think we got five, we got, yeah, he want me to, yeah, I got five, let me, all right.
Yeah, all right, you got five, I'm about to say. You got, you got five. You got five, eight. Yeah, you were pretty loud. But I'm kidding, yeah, 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 you got a lot. I thought so, I mean, I'm afraid of that, yeah. I, yeah, I've seen my, my group, these men, uh, over there, they're, 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 they're. With a bad mood. I, I probably, I didn't like that.
You get a damn order, you still in the back of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
No, I see you, now, I'm gonna get that.
You know you go off. Thank you, not forget that.
Hello, say hello. Was that done? Yeah, I did. You work that far, what do you want to do? Yeah. For that, that's long, that's often, they couldn't do it.
Oh, okay. But that's the thing, you know, my father, he had that number.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this time we love each other. They tell them all.
It says he's not.
You take five.
We have company all come over, we'll give it first, all they will, uh, make up the whole.
Where's that?
You didn't.
Well, where are you sitting today?
There's not, I never get any. Are you sitting on a county's bench?
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can be up.
You know, county.
I'm getting tired of that.
I don't think you make that easy on the office.
They want to watch that, you know, probably even. No, I ain't saying.
I'll, I'll, I'll put it on.
I feel I got five, and I am ready for that.
You, you send me some.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you. Yeah, I'll do some. Yeah, he does, um, if I had, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this guy, I look at him, he's like.
Now, but then he's going on.
I don't, what's going on, I got it, look. Didn't have the mix prepared, long as one year, chop, chop, just chop yourself out of it. Well.
You give it to me, too much working, I think.
I know, I do. All, all people here, they're not so early, about one o'clock, when you and your girl.
That's put on my shoulders, and I'm, I'm just gonna go back.
Yeah, I tell him, it's a big ordeal, put on my, my gun. You do the thank you, damn thank you, all work, but we put anything, it was good. Yeah, that's always fun. Some good stuff, if you want to make.
Yeah, he's like, could be with you, yeah, that's it. You just want to go home, babe, and I tell you.
No, I'm not there, I'm just going.
You don't count for us, look, he's playing, I don't think, I don't think.
You got all those pictures.
Yeah. So you got a lot of them? I'm gonna sell tests on you. I don't know. No, no, I'm sure, yeah. I don't know. You got them all. You got a couple of that? Yeah. Oh, good. You want to look at my town, come on, what's that? I didn't, I, yes, I know. He always want, yeah, so. I bet they, we all have it, too, back then. Yeah, you don't get you. Yeah, I know, yeah. Yeah, we all, yeah, double, yeah, that's right, I look, yeah. What's all this? Yeah, I'm all right. Okay, how about you?
Sure.
We can't.
Oh, okay. You're quite the thing.
Yeah, you, you know, you want to talk. Make it out of them.
I'm putting that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Okay. Okay, okay. And then you.
Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy, and our apologies, and special remains, but remains worthy to be said. Father, we thank you for the justice you had so for days, and we now join, and we thank you, and now, Father, we pray, and we pray for those that are protected around the world, that we might be able to have this prayer, and we thank you. We thank they were wanted here, that you're the one standing, and the decision that you made, we don't say from person, but what the desperate community, even though it might be against what we believe, but it is desperate community, and the community shifts, machines over you, bless you now, and loving now, and we thank you. In Jesus' name, my prayer, amen.
Amen. Our prayers lead you to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to the meeting, this is a workshop, and, uh, we did not vote on items, uh, during the workshop, I think you're saying, the clients are voting, it is, um, can be put on the next agenda. Um, before we get started, I've been asked to table item number four, Victor Blanco and Renee May, that could discuss skinfish, bi tech, and crab trap seeders, I wish he's unable to be here, and number six, the board to discuss emergency medical services. Uh, I think there were some people that could not be here for this, so we will table those to another time. We'll begin with item number three, the board to continue discussion of proposed right-of-way abandonment proportions of First Avenue Northwest, Second Avenue Northwest, Third Avenue Northwest, and Fourth Street Northwest, located in San Jacinto, Georgia. Sam, if you want to speak first?
Whenever you want.
Come on.
If you look at this in your practice.
Uh, I think I got this.
So let me see, we're waiting up. Is that in what you?
That was in the first, I think.
Okay, there's fifty, I'm looking, there's fifty.
I think so, yeah.
Uh, sixty-one point nine eight acres, Mark.
Right, I guess, uh, two one.
That's a good, uh, I mean, the next, you can look at it now. Here, the six hundred and something next to the left.
Next to the last, and one, that's.
Everybody, count it. What's the bottom, you make for the last ten?
Can't pick the one.
Yeah, yeah.
One, you said that.
I'm still off, Sam. Sixty-one point nine eight.
Who's the other, that's people we love here now.
Yeah, good, good, no.
Yeah.
That.
Please, take the current arm, the one I'm looking at, please, the arm.
Uh, I miss, I don't know. I'm scared.
Is there a form, the arm?
The one that I was having with Virginia, and the town.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Okay. Then may I share?
If you put, if you read the draft, with, maybe at the top of your page, and you look down the mouth of the center, at the bottom, you'll see First Avenue Northwest and Fourth Street, where it goes in the river. At the corner.
Now, wait a minute, where's the river at?
Just at the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but at the bottom, the river.
Yeah.
Now, this is the first street, I can't read it.
It's kind of small, the river.
Yeah.
Right, if, if you look at twenty-six, that's nine, 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 on the upper side, and then right by that, that's First Street, then it's the continuation of First Street.
Okay.
The lot, right on the corner of Fourth Street and First Avenue, is owned by people in August in Virginia, its set value is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. They have paid, been paying taxes on it for years and years. If you go to the next lot west of that one, that is county-owned. The county got that lot at the same time we got the fifty-one point nine eight acres.
That's one of the small lots, huh?
Well, they're actually both about an acre.
Okay, it's real small.
Now, Mr. Sam, that is all marsh, that two point eight acres that the county owns right there.
That is all marsh.
That is all marsh.
But on the flat, it shows turning on First Avenue. The lot next to it, that's equal, Virginia owns, shows turning on First Avenue and on Fourth Street. If you are to close Fourth Street and First Avenue, technically, you have land lots, those two lots. Regardless of whether it is marsh right now or not. Uh, there are methods out there where you can fail, you can build above marsh. There's permitting processes to do it. Now, both of those streets are subject to right-of-way, each street is by an acre. If you go up to Second Avenue, that goes into your sixty-one point nine eight acres, that is a one hundred foot long right-of-way, and if you close a Fourth Street over to your acreage, that is about one and a third acre. If you go up to Second Avenue, and close that street, that is about an acre too. So all total, on the request for closing Fourth Street, you're looking at about four acres. Which is a bit of acreage.
Yes, it is. Mr. Sam, where is the, the lift station located? Is that on Second Avenue?
No, lift station is at the corner of Second Avenue and Fourth Street, on the southwest corner.
Okay, so that is, that's access to water and sewer. Is that the county property, is that the only access at this time?
At that area, and the sewers line from the condos down there on the old wood property, actually go underneath Fourth Street to reach the lift station, and they're gravity lines, they're not pressure lines.
You know what we need to do? I think that we all need to go down there and physically look at this, and we could, if we all went there, we could advertise that we're gonna all be there. And, uh, do a public notice, and let's go down, and let's look at this, let's have the map in hand, and so that way, we know exactly, because I can look at this map all day long, and I can't visualize, what he told us, I don't, I see it. To be fair, to make it a lot easier, I need to see it.
I'd be glad to meet you, if you're in time, you could choose the time, you know.
That's a good idea. You know, this is official proof, we're better off each meeting with him individually, right?
Okay, here's many times fifty-one.
So if we, if you don't advertise it, wouldn't you not?
There's, there's a case law out there that if you go together, um, that way, it's maybe violation of the.
Close the time, huh?
Well, I'm not holding out money to get us this meeting, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, I don't, I think it's just better, um, the perception, but, again, individually, you need to meet with, um, um, Sam, and that so he can show you, because I agree with you with regard to not being able to figure out of it. And you keep saying Fourth Street. Are you saying Fourth Avenue? You know, or what, was it Mark Fourth Street on here?
Yeah.
Where? I got, I got.
Yeah, streets go.
But it says, but it says Fourth Avenue right there.
It's this right here.
You see what I'm talking about, Sam?
Yeah.
See, that's where I was getting confused, because you kept saying Fourth Street.
You were looking at it right there.
Well, it's Fourth Avenue Northwest and Fourth Avenue Northwest, and we're, it's not Mark, then. It's not, not Mark. Okay, well, see, if it's not Mark, you can see where I was going, where, doesn't it? Do you understand?
Say that, or from here.
Uh, it's bigger than that, okay, I told you.
Sam, if you, if you remember, if you remember your phone number, you want to get a little something, you know.
It's three five two, nine four nine, seven five one seven.
Seven.
Seven five one seven.
So three five two, nine four nine, seven five one seven.
Right.
Okay.
And that's, and home phone, and it's a good phone, so when I answer, pop out.
And it takes him a while to get it out, it's pop.
Yeah, I, I, that's fine, mine's very short, man.
Mr. Sam, if you'll come by over there, we think we can get a big map, and let's ride on the, there, and put it in cars, so he'll get down, and make him look at, when he get back down. Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
And if you go, you may have a map, go to the car, you go have a look.
Yeah.
You'll have all that.
When he gets down, come by with his car.
Okay. Now, now, are you gonna be in town to get that, or you want one of us to take it up for you, so you don't have to come all the way up here? I can take it up, and, and I'll be down there.
Okay, that would be.
I'll, I'll take it.
That would save the trip. Probably needs to, the next section you're talking about, needs to be marsh on here, so you know, and being one of the line comes over the time of the road, we can show that as well.
Right, you can do that.
Yeah, we can do that. And the reason I'm aware of it, was in twenty twelve, USDA gave BBWA a plan to add sewer along most inactive river on San Jacinto side. And I was hired by USDA and their engineer to be the on-site inspector, and the contractor had his own surveyor, and we, every place we did a line, or we did a lift station, had to be surveyed, and put on the map that went to BBWA. And the lift station is entirely on right-of-way, Second Avenue, and then four, I'm not sure. And if you actually see it, it will mean part of it.
Mr. Sam, can I ask you one more question? As far as which of these roads or right-of-way are improved, as far as the ability to allow traffic? When you're looking at the sixty-one point ninety-eight acres that the county owns, you can access from Fifth Avenue to Street, since at the top of it, you can get to it from the top of the property, so even if Second Avenue were closed, there would be access to that property, but the concern, I would say, on Second Avenue, is the access to water sewer. If closing that would somehow impact.
It will impact your access to the lift station, if you ever put a bathroom, or any type of facility on the sixty-one acres.
Okay, well, we'll be.
Yeah, I can form that out, when you ask.
We'll be, they'll call, and they'll meet you, and, um, you can tell each one of us, and they'll have that map that's bigger, and it comes, that way, so we come back and discuss it, the next time, you'll be knowledgeable.
Okay, and I add to this, here is the different map. It's the same area, there are two sixty-one acres, at the bottom, it shows, uh, twenty-seven nine nine, and that shows the material line that on front of that sixty-one acres. The family owns that, that lives in Tampa, they actually own two hundred and three acres there, in three different sections. So set value of the whole two hundred and three acres, is five thousand dollars total, because it's all marsh. Uh, if in some way, the county could clean up with all, or part of that two hundred and three acres, in front of your sixty-one, in the future plans where that sixty-one acres will be accounted for, fishing grounds could be considered then, because you would own all the way out to the park. Uh, back when the VC thing, and when the elephants gave you the sixty-one acres, uh, this family was taught to, and they were women who worked with the county at that time, because that was the time that a group of presidents in San Jacinto got together and hired an architect to make one idea of the type of park or activities that could be on that six, sixty-one acres worth of county. Uh, I don't know how they feel now about it, but the price should be right, and as an individual, I feel it would be a good thing to pursue that a little bit, because once you got that preparing right in your hands, it would not matter then, if it was ten or twenty years from now, that somebody got it up together to put in efficiency, if you table some playgrounds.
Would there be a place there for an opportunity for kayaking, to, to launch a kayak or a canoe?
That whole, um, southern valley of the sixty-one acres, the, you can launch kayaks and canoes without putting any ramps or anything in, and when we were down there, I forced that out.
Okay, good, good deal, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna, we're table number four, we'll go to, um, five, the board to discuss commercial, we'll give you some natural context. Do you mind your, sorry, do you mind your, sorry, come over there? If you have more, if you're twenty years old, I'm sorry.
If I'm gonna have a field to it anyway, that doesn't half make it, no, like, lady, lady, I agree with all of you.
Why you want to go today?
I agree with all of you, I was trying to cross the project, but, uh.
What's your next thought?
Chuck Long. I live, I'm taking those fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Thank you, Avenue North. There's been a concern of hoping the one point one four acres, you look at the third lane, we had to present all of this, and something else, we, doing this is a proper procedure, because in, about every county, slaver, even an abandoned road, it's never been used, you ask for an advantage, we're not asking the county to give us anything, we're just following what the county has already tried, anyway. That one point one nine acres, fourteen acres, this is being hard run, we have no fault, but don't keep, we're sorry. One point, one four nine? One four nine. And Third Avenue is up there, and it's just, oh, it's one, eight acres. And Third Avenue, the place, it's, uh. Seventh Avenue? Yeah, seventy by four hundred and ninety, or se- seventy by four hundred and ninety feet, ninety feet. But the First Avenue, the property that the people in Virginia owns and slavers, we have a contract, first, it's her property, was the whole reason for the whole house law starting, connected to the river, flows First Avenue North, and the one that's on south. And I understand the concern, I suppose, Mr. Reed, with the big, we're talking about the, um, substation corner there, they gradually closed out the condo. substation corner there, they gradually started out upon the, on the way. It's not shown on the survey, I don't know exactly where it is in the state. But, I say, if we're gonna have a deal to get this, everybody's gonna go out there. We can do this. This is all done properly, but I don't think Mr. Allen, but he may be out there. Other than, it's point seven nine acres on First Avenue and it's one point two five acres two on, uh, the south end of Fourth Street West. It's something like. And they also have their contract on block one thirty-nine and one forty. They're not giving, they're not paying. One forty, one thirty-nine. Just the same people that own this, on this, so we don't, we don't, we don't give a distance, distance in this without anything. Because this all is being established in time of the year.
Okay, now, what do you know?
Um, oh.
Okay.
Okay, and tell me your name again.
Chuck Long.
Can I have this?
Yeah, you can.
Chuck Long, then, do you mind if you give me your?
Three and six. We have seven.
Three nine seven?
Three seven five.
Three seven five, uh, do you mind if I give you the other call?
You can.
Okay. Um, just understand that I don't think anybody here is making any decision or any commitment as far as I know. Uh, we're just trying to, um.
This is the worst, this is the worst we can tell.
And we wanna, you know, we wanna hear all thoughts of it and look at everything so that, like upstairs to Mr. Ridgeway, when we come back, that, uh, we can, you know, hopefully make the right decision.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hope, I hope not to give anybody any injustice by anything. Uh, but, uh, but it's, counties own the properties for over seventy yards, they don't let their own in this on paper. They don't pay taxes, of course, they just, they're sitting there on paper. And the proper challenge in any county goes, I mean, it's all in the state of Florida, just seek abandon. Just flat it out. And I'm not sure when subdivision was done, I think it was around, what, the late forties? Mm-hmm. The family, just repurposing that property, um, potentially, her father, you know, platted that property. Before she told me. But regardless, um, those two roads are the main keys to getting what he wants to do. Uh, that's in the top of you, the, uh, county access to that sixty acres under there, they got some students or junior, uh, you know, years of. And part of the guy down there on the marsh, he's, he's got two acres there. It looks about like that six acres. Those and that. I think that's the market down there, that's his business, he's pretty familiar out there, out there. But we just wanna do something nice, I mean, we, we build something, make something nice. Hiring homes, I'm sure it's not gonna be trade hearts and those, I don't know. Hiring communities, but still, we'll keep it. Like I said, we just fall into the level of those conditions laws that have, I mean, what we do. Most other states, other counties, the states, we get this proper challenge. But of course, after we give it, we just cannot ask to give anything. Because everybody's big, we split the, the condos, giving them another side, with the part thirty-five, good, and cross. And the other mass, yeah, same, same, same.
I'll give you, I'll probably give you a call soon.
Anytime.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this issue? Now, I'm ready, I didn't mean, I love the time to move around. Okay.
I don't even call my best man or the chief man.
Stan, you know?
The chief man, I'm not helping, buddy.
Um.
Just walk on.
He's not gonna be here tonight, so we're gonna have to take it down.
We won't get, I might help.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure he'll have a clue, yeah.
Thank y'all.
Okay, I was on the phone, we're going to discuss Marshall Ridgeway's collection contract.
Okay. We just wanted to bring to the board's attention that after ten years of service with Waste Pro, that the five-year extension to their original contract is coming to an end. Um, the contract ends January thirty-first. So, the process that we will need to follow is that the next board agenda, we will have the, the documents on the agenda and request to advertise for that contract. And we've come and done this in ten years. So, we just wanted to bring it to your attention that that is, the end of the contract. They had requested an extension, but after thorough review by Mr. Conrad and looking at, um, parts of the proposal and the contract, um, it is our understanding that we need to, um, pursue a request for proposal and follow, follow that method.
Okay, if there are any issues or anything questionable or anything that we need and not being done, or anything about this, uh, would you let us know? Any, any doubt that we might need to know, um, you know, before we extend this, if it comes to that, or when it comes to that?
Well, it's not, you can't extend.
I mean, it's something, yeah, we advertise it though. They, they, they reapply, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am. And I have not, I think I've received one complaint, um, um, from a, um, from a business, and it was promptly addressed by Waste Pro. I talked to Jerry and he can't recall any complaints.
Okay.
Um, we will be reaching out to other companies in the area to let them know this will go out to this. But we aren't unaware of anyone who is interested in the contract.
Okay.
Please, Tom, something else, um, and I don't have certain obvious stuff, I've talked to, um, Lawanda about this. Uh, the contract that, the agreement that was entered into was for five years, with an automatic extension of option to renew for five years was done. The contract also provided that the proposal would be a part of the contract. And that happens a lot of times with, with our bids. I don't know, uh, you can tell them what the guy told you if he wants it, it's up to you. But if they try to say that, you know, that it's automatically another five years, we're gonna have a problem with them because it doesn't say that. Contract says, and the proposal, which is part of the contract, says that there's an additional five years. I don't know that y'all, that because of, in two thousand nine, or five years, in two thousand nine, we'll be interested in a fifteen-year. You know, that's a long, long, and that, well, ten years is a long time. It's worked out well, according to what, um, what, um, and Lawanda just said. But I just wanted to understand, we might get some flack with regard to that, then saying that we understand it's another option. Well, what that would be would be option, 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 and they have it forever, and, you know. Don't do that. You say we don't do that, or, you know, we don't have a contract forever.
Yes.
Yes, and I don't.
We did a five-year with the, uh, with it next quarter, we could extend it for five more years, so we did that, and we're at that point now.
Right. And they, they, they made one extension for another year or something like that. And my vibe to Lawanda was to say, no, let's go ahead and follow the contract and re-advertise. That's my vibe.
Are they attached to that or not?
They were under the advice that it would automatically renew.
Mm-hmm.
So, they did not even reach out to me and say, oh, by the way, our contract's coming due. I had to reach out to them and said, your contract's coming due. And they sent me sections of the proposal and were adamant that that was not the case. And I guess it had been discussed in previous discussions, um, with the, with the previous administrator.
There you go, get to it. Get to it. Come on, let it all hang up, yeah.
So, when Mr. Ridgeway was discussing with Waste Pro, cur- the possibility of curbside service, my understanding was that there was, I don't wanna say a promise, that it was understood that they would have at least a three-year extension to their contract. And after reading document after document, performing an exhaustive search, searching through emails, I could not find an agreement, um, for it, or even a draft agreement between ourselves and. So, I, I do know that the contractor feels like that they should have an extension to their agreement. But I asked them to present some supporting documentation, and they have not been able to.
So, y'all understand where we're coming from?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I, I think we're doing the right thing.
Mm-hmm.
We go out to bid.
Yeah.
Now, there's a risk that we'll get, you know, a higher price, but that's just a risk, right?
Or they could lower the, what, what they pay us for the franchise, which is currently a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So, that is a, that is a risk, and we'd use that to fund our solid waste operations. So, um, but it is one of those.
Do you, do you want to do that? Now, the other, the other time we done January, the, January thirty-first.
If we ask, if we have the RST documents on the next agenda,
Yeah.
we really could advertise for forty-five days, and then, um, it would, it should be fine. Then we could open the bid in November and award the contract in December because we want to give someone forty-five days from the day the contract's signed until they have the next receipt.
If you want to get, talk again, you know, not have enough time to do, I mean, you can do, if you have to advertise, you know, back today, uh, front, how many days?
It, it would be forty-five. And so, it will, it will work with our agenda being, um, earlier in December, um, rather than later, um, that, that will give us enough time to award the contract. And, I mean, we'll have to hit the ground running, but, but we have enough time to do this. And we will start reaching out to other waste collecting services in the, you know, in the immediate area and out. And if, if we all know any company who wishes to bid, please let me know, and we'll reach out to them.
Comment.
Man.
Several years ago, what makes them, if you became up about this, we saw having to negotiate on something. And they wanna look at that and see if it's something that was actually, um, should be considered in a contract. And what's that had to do with the, that market going up and down?
Oh, yeah, those were, yeah, there was, there was something about, uh, it wasn't CCI, that it was, um, inflation for a lack of a better term. And that, didn't we just say we weren't gonna do that?
Yeah, and I was thinking maybe you want to do something in the contract to prevent that kind of, if she come up, like you.
Right.
Who can?
And, and then, the other thing is, if there was some sort of rum or arena, and it was not more free than that, that would fly, you know?
That will not, that will not, you know, um. You know, that's what, that's what Lawanda and I discussed, um, um, today, we discussed today and we talked about. And, and I, they asked me, uh, they actually asked me to look at that, and I looked at it, um, Friday over, been over the weekend, um, specifically four point one in the proposal. Not that, in the proposal. Um, and, you know, there's a term in, um, in Latin, ad infinitum.
Ad infinitum.
You know, I mean, you can't tack, 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 that, that's not good business, you know? Because then they're, they're locked in, uh, again, just like, um, when you pay six, you may not get as good a deal, but you might get a better deal, and that's the, um, risk you take. And, you know, this board has always, your predecessors and y'all have always favored this, to give people the opportunity to, to bid on, I'm saying, um, and come for the board. Very well.
Thank you.
Bye then.
Table is table number six, we're going to number seven, the board to discuss smoking, baking, and pot.
When I was making comments about a lot of things, I was watching a little bit of local news, and a big segment on baking, all the dangers, and people are getting lung disease and that. I used to be better following in, in the, uh, the dive, about keeping up with, with all the increases in, in the cough diseases that are caused by baking.
That's what CDQ's that.
That's what CDQ's that, and I heard that.
Hey, you're talking, you're gonna have to tell it to the town.
But what do we need to do for baking?
And, and that's another thing, that's the deal before we get to that. There's about eighty acres up there. Of course.
Yeah, uh-huh.
What do we do? I mean, how? Yes. Are we going to go on?
We all have something we need to think about. Now, this, this, this I fit on the sand, it's free dog. They're in the medical part of it. I can, I can read.
It's agriculture what they do.
Agriculture, it's very lean. What?
They're in the ag what they do, and they just ruin enough film and stuff.
Is it a medical type marijuana, or is that a hemp farm?
I don't know, it's probably both.
I don't know.
Take the knowledge.
But they're walking, yeah, I don't know, it's, it's under ag, it's in, they probably grow, they don't, you know, it's healthy.
It's healthy.
That's what it is.
I'm expecting about, this, 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 this. Well, it is something, you know, that many people are watching through, probably didn't know, they wanted, they met someone through the huck, they just wanted to be high. So, I don't know the difference between the, the reading you're taking about.
You're right, well. Uh, we just heard a study, well, today, about the flavor, and it seems that all these steps relate back to the flavors baking.
Uh-huh.
I know. I don't know the mint and scents like that. Well, I may not be.
Well, now, like, get, get them out, uh.
That's right.
Those flavors. Apple, um, chewed about, you know, you had the apple in there, you had the brown bean.
Uh-huh.
That's the chew.
Okay.
All of the flavor.
I think when we talked about this, um, last week or whenever it was, the question at that time was, what are we gonna include in this? Is it, it's gonna be parks, what parks, is it gonna be boat ramps, is it gonna be buildings? And so, I think that's probably where we're at, right?
Well, um, let me say that Conrad and I have had several versions of this ordinance go back and forth.
Go back and forth, I'm sorry.
Because after we went through a little bit of buildings and parks and boat ramps and all that, it came to my attention that some of these parks, um, that the county owns are not tobacco-free. So, what the current draft ordinance would do is to prohibit baking in parks where smoking is not prohibited. So, I, um, discussed the situation with the Department of Health with Cheryl Moore, who is a tobacco prevention professor. And she wrote a letter of, um, support. And what, what that entity was like is that we could make all of our public parks tobacco-free, including smoking and baking, is her recommendation. And she did, um, she did bring to my attention that the city council has designated all of their city parks, including picnic areas, sports areas, and parking lots as tobacco-free zones. So, my question to the board is, do you want to have Conrad write version number six to include all buildings and parks as tobacco-free zones, that includes base, tobacco- to include all buildings and parks as tobacco-free zones, that includes base, tobacco-free and?
That's a pretty flash vaping, you know?
Yeah, so I got a, a question. Lots of parks are not tobacco-free right now, can you, you know some?
Well, I can say everything but state or community parks, the Taylor County Sports Complex, and, um, Hampton Springs.
Are they the only three that are tobacco-free?
Yes, ma'am.
Not even one of the parks?
No.
Oh.
Boat ramps?
No.
I, I like the version that you, that I took from this morning. Yep, all buildings and all county parks and property. And, uh, tobacco-free vaping.
I agree. So, um, I did, I did provide a list, and I broke down, um, county parks, um, boat ramps, buildings, fire stations, um... So, and, so are you saying that everything listed under parks, you would like to be tobacco-free, no vaping?
And buildings.
And buildings, yes, ma'am.
Uh, if, if it's put out in this building?
That's all, all buildings.
Now, most of it is not considered a park.
Ma'am, no, no.
So, um...
Who's this one?
A, a boat ramp is not considered.
Yeah, it's not considered a park.
That would be a, a separate, um, item. What she's talking about are just parks and buildings, but it, it would exclude right now boat ramps and what else? That would be all, really just boat ramps.
And you're allowed the boat ramps. Are you, but, no, they can't.
But you know, we've got children at the boat ramps.
Yeah, you do.
And, um...
You know, after you get to the boat, and you get them out there on the water, and like, they got to. They got to.
For me, just personally, I would make it all inclusive.
You know, all in one slide.
That's, that's my idea, the parks, boat ramps, county buildings, anything county-owned, on the completed.
There you go. And if you got a hallway that smokes, you don't have to breath that step across the street. Like, shoot, this is, uh...
So, you want to include parking lots?
Go up and have a cigarette.
You want to include parking lots, parking areas? What, like what? Say, we have an employee who works in a building, who, who bakes, and they not step outside and bathe, and then come back inside?
Well, I don't want somebody standing on the, oh, I don't want somebody standing on the stairs. But it still ain't just, I guess it could be any of our buildings if they, if they bathe, and they, and they go outside of the building.
And off the street, out of the parking lot.
I think a lot of them dead on his property. On the property. I believe that's what happened at the hospital when we first started, um, with the, no smoking. The people were going to stand, not, including doctors and nurses and health. And not outside the emergency room door, and stuff, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, so, let's get into the D R, whatever, whatever.
I like anybody says property, I like that property, that's just me now.
I believe the resolution of the city council designated city parks, including picnic areas, sports areas, and parking lots as tobacco-free zones. In the way of that.
County property, any county property. That means the buildings, parking lots, whatever, right? Well, I'm fine.
I told Juan that, I thought, we ought to, um, speed now, listen to this. No smoking, no vaping, no chewing, no fishing, no fun. I'm speeding now, yeah.
I will say that some of our county properties have a designated area for smoking for employees, um, some, and, and just to bring your attention to it, I mean, some of our employees work long shifts, and they may smoke, or they may bathe, and they actually have designated areas for smoking and vaping.
Who's the example of that?
Of all outside. So, we may have a roll-off side attendant to smoke, and I, I'm just concerned that it would create a hardship when they don't have someone, you know, they don't have the facility to take a lunch break, they can't get in their car and go somewhere else to smoke. Um, and they are accustomed to a designated area for, for smoking.
Well, I'm talking about the river parks for a minute. Do we allow smoking in company, in county businesses?
I don't believe so.
So, while they're out there all in line, or off here and there, if they want to eat and smoke, they can park the truck, I guess, and get out and go out there and smoke outside and prove.
I'm thinking more of our employees who are confined, who are stopped all day, and they, and they're accustomed to having a break at a certain point in the day where they can smoke. But some of our employees cannot leave their location, so, uh, which is why I believe we do have some designated smoking areas.
Well, yeah. Have, have we ever considered smoking cessation of programs? I know we did that at the hospital, and we, we, um, provided the patches, and we actually had quite a few people that quit smoking and did not start back. Uh, and if you think about it in the long run, it's helping the health insurance, and, um, it's really a win-win if you can, you know, work it for voluntary things, you know, people would have to want to do that.
That is offered through United Healthcare, and they can receive a fifty-dollar gift card if they enter into a smoking cessation program. Um, so that is an incentive that we have offered for several years, as far as I know, like, that's changed.
Um, but that's something that annually, I mean, I'm assuming you meet your employees annually for updates or whatever, is it something that's, that gets rolled up, you know, to the management?
Yeah, and, and we have, we actually have a flyer where, that discusses the incentives for the gift card, and that is something that we should add to health incentives.
Well, you know, if, just, just in the area, if you can't smoke, it's a roll-off anymore, that might, incentives might, might sell really good. I mean, think about it, huh?
I, I'm thinking about, uh, the roll-off people, or maybe the people that are confined, you know, Conrad could word in there, no smoking except, you know, definitely, smoking area.
That, that would be my plan.
And you might, might need to find that, so it won't, it'd be a, a smoking area.
How about, how about define as a present designated smoking area?
As present, that way it would be added to it, that's why, yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, my, hold on. My only concern is if we do have staff who may be confined, and there's not a designated smoking area, because maybe the building's out of the way, or they always just, I mean, we all have a sign and something up, but they, so we don't want them staying outside the door, but saying they go around the corner, and they sit at the picnic table, and that's where they smoke.
Well, you're getting too precise here.
Yeah, that's right, in my humble opinion.
If you say, you know, you're going to say all county property, which includes, and we're going to list all buildings, and let's, let's, yeah, we're going to do that.
We want to do that.
Yes, I did.
Why don't we get one?
Well, we just get one.
Not this one.
Yeah.
Well, I think on this it said all parks, county buildings, boat ramps, and any county-owned property or buildings, and you could say except county roll-off, if you wanted to just take your mind.
Or you could say except any present designated smoking area.
Right, and if you need to add one, you need to do it quickly, or it's that important, if you do.
I thought we had decided just to say buildings instead of listing all of that.
We did that, we did that before, you know, we said that, but I got to thinking about it.
That was written number four.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I got to thinking about it, and I'm thinking, what you do is you think offensively, and then you think sensitively, if I'm defending this ordinance, and some part of, or you're something, if we didn't designate something else, blah, 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 I might have had it all, you know, and all encompassing, except for the designated smoking area.
Now, is there any penalty, what, what, what penalty? Our call, we're talking, they don't need to, uh, they're bidding.
They're on fractions, uh...
They're on fractions.
Well, I think it'd be almost like a warning, and, you know, you try it out, like you do with any, any, um, offense, you know, a warning, verbal, and then you have a written, or whatever the policy is. It's a hundred dollars the first time, two hundred dollars the second time.
Employees?
Everybody. Everybody.
Everybody, employees could be fined a hundred dollars.
Don't do it.
Well, you know, I was just thinking, if I was a smoker or a vaper, and I think you should go out, standing on the steps, and I don't know if anybody does or not, so I'm not, just anyway, someone that's doing it, but say, I did that. And then all of a sudden, we passed this, and well, you know, that was kind of my designated area, and now you're, I don't, you, you've given the roll-off tenant a designated area, but not us.
Yeah.
So, somebody sure as hell won't say that.
Well, now, that's some places, and I don't work, you don't care if the tobacco product's on the market.
Do, would that be possible?
Easy.
Is that, I'm kind of, I'm a gold on a horn, you know?
I'm looking at it, and you can go back. Well, I'm thinking that they're going to get a fire, and if you want to get at it, um, I'm certain that, uh, uh... You know, you're going to have somebody that's going to, um, whether you put, whether you write a letter up in Horseshoe, we, what we did was, it was a fifty-dollar fine for not designating that you have an R V. Fifty-dollar fine, you know, you had to come in and sign up, and, uh, because, and give your phone number and email address, so when the form was coming, our clerk would let them know. And, you know, that's going to work really well. Oh, my goodness, first, we had a big Griffin Norton, um, meeting, and they just didn't want that in there, they just want that fifty-dollar fine, and, uh, we'll move our, we'll move our R Vs we want, blah, blah, blah. And the council said, okay, well, you know, if your, your R V goes off into the dump, it's fine with us. We, we, we took it off, they took it off. And I really didn't argue with them too much about that, because that's what their constituents wanted, okay? Now, the big thing now is, like, um, y'all just talked about vaping, it's named coffee and vaping, but, you know, that's the name of it, but, I mean, um, the people tell me about twelve-year-olds being asked to, to vape.
They do.
It's horrible.
Yeah, and that's great.
And, and, and there's going to be lawsuits out the media and all this, on just people getting, and, you know, there's lawsuits that were involved with the opioids, and all this kind of stuff. Um, I think, you know, you can micro-manage your ordinance such that you do this, this, and that, or you can just say, not yours, you know? Me, I'm going to do what y'all can't even do to put in the ordinance. And I'm going to listen to you most of the time.
And we wanted to not make this a, 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 a micro-managing, did we?
You take out the fines, you can take, you don't have to have the fines, or you can ignore the fines, or you can, you can say, but the thing about a warning, you know, that and the law, that's what's giving me people horseshoes, heartburn and flak and that.
Because even with the roll-off, it's, it's, you're making a special exception for somebody. Now, this is an example, now, I, I'm just saying, now, if that's the way it is, it's a special exception for one group of people, why not, let's say, no vaping is smoking, smoking on county property, that's your problem, is smoking, vaping, you've got to deal with it. We also do a way to quit it, if you don't want to take it, then you figure out how you go lock it up. What do you think? Is that too extreme to want?
I don't think so, um, if you're going to have some points to start with, that you're going to, but we knew, as we all grown up, you know, I can remember, and I told y'all about this, that when I went to the board and county commissioners meeting in Locky at county, every commissioner plus the club smoked. I did so, and I got home, my wife said, now, where were you? Were you at the bar, man? He's not like, no, go take a shower, get that out of your hands. And now, nobody smokes in the commission room, no luck, you know? I mean, our commission room was a lot smaller than this one. You know, the guy actually smoked a cigar, you know?
You remember everybody over there, didn't you?
Yeah. But, now, we all think we asked our V V about the cheerleader, that was the cheerleader, and that whole thing was awful, awful. So, again, um, and we don't know what vaping is going to do, we didn't, you know, we, we can't be, we can't be good. I mean, they have menthol and cannabis, and so, so, um, you're going to have some good points if you get you what I call shotgun it, but then real late, somebody's going to come and say, and there's a money on those bags, I'll pass it, oh, it's got me to put a gun in, and I, I don't pay any money. I don't pay, what do they pay for a pack of cigarettes now?
That's, that's why I'm at, because, you know, either you're going to do it and be all inclusive, or you're not going to do it. I don't think it's, it's like to say, it's okay for y'all, but it's not okay for anybody else.
Right.
So, that, that's...
That's not, I, I'll go with you on that one.
So, you're leaving in the designated smoking area or not?
No.
No, no designated smoking.
On all count, no smoking, vaping, or any, what does that say, anybody? It says, uh, park, county buildings, boat ramps, and, yeah, boat ramps, and any county-owned property or dealer.
Now, you know the, you know the back, like, we just didn't choose to. Uh... But, like you say, we got to, we take a shotgun front, and get it all in one time, no exceptions, and, and, yeah, it works.
Do you want me to put a penalty in there or not?
Tell me.
Yeah.
Well, if you don't, if somebody shuts the door, this is our hospital, it's been a while.
I know, I mean, I put a hundred dollars, if you want a couple bucks on that.
My understanding, just from talking to people, speaking with Gary, is that any time they ask someone not to smoke, that's, you know, typically they say, okay, and if they continue to smoke, they will absolutely. They never had a problem with that.
I'm not sure, I don't think you can exclude any department, that, that for the rest of the system, don't go on, this department excluded.
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying that I don't, from my understanding, we've not had any issues enforcing the current ordinance as far as tobacco-free.
Conrad, how are you going to determine if a person's second chance?
Do what now?
How are you going to determine, baby, the person's second chance, when you got first chance for seven, and second one? Always can tell with the technology that they got, so. So, if whoever's going to light these topics, are they going to, uh, keep a list for those people who's in it? That, that could be.
That could be what they have to do.
You'd say that's a penalty, twenty-five dollars each time you call.
It was a twenty percent, if you call, twenty, uh, or fifty.
If it's same time, it was the same amount every time you called.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
But you can't keep up with it, with the second, to run, so, stop hitting the people.
A hundred dollars?
Or fifteen, I would strike for that.
Fifty dollars, they take fifty dollars, every time you call, fifty dollars.
Where is the card?
This card.
Okay.
Well, that's fifty, he's called Harst Rosie.
I don't think any department has to, um, cover up for anybody that's doing it, like, I don't know. I would hate to know that somebody did that. And I love how it goes, you've got a good plan, a good point here, and they decide they're going to smoke in the truck, and it's all blown out the window, and you're not going to sign it, you know?
Fifty bucks, fine.
Yeah.
Fifty bucks. We're at nine hundred, so we can do this one. Okay, we're going to do it. All right, let me try.
And this is something, as I say, to the deputy, the right.
This is the right.
Man, this is, this is an employee, however, there's, it is, it is a law, it's a law. I don't think you should call the law, I think, if it goes by employee, it's on the property, I have someone call the law. I don't want to do that.
You're not going to have a lot on you.
I thought we would do that, huh? This should be dealt with. I thought we would do that part, it should be dealt with, in how?
For our employees. Well, I put in there, if I remember correctly, that, um, if they wanted a hearing, they could ask for a hearing before the judge. Either pay or go to hearing.
I don't think we have anything in our employee policies that would address particularly like that.
You have to write a policy to protect, if they can accept. I put in, it said, I put in that, if I remember correctly, that, um, if you wanted contest, if you have to go in front of the judge. I don't know that people would be happy with that.
Well, what we'd have is, is they go to his office, you know what happens over there?
I, I know, but sometimes you just gotta go in and go for it.
Because people's hearing claims that was not paid by one. If you request, you requested a hearing before the judge, can't, and that's there as a citation, and that's all this guy, and it's not valid.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard to tell from.
So we would have to write and make our policies and have employees sign off on it during orientation or annual training that they understand there's no tobacco products. And/or vaping.
That's what I'm following.
Um, sure.
What about you, buddy?
Fifty dollars, you call this, no, no, you call it.
You go game, you go dead here.
She says, that's not happening. Just like them, this is gonna happen, I'm like, I did it there, my, my...
No, 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 not, not, not being...
Well, I've been learning from it. So the public officer.
Hey, now, let me get straight on this. If the public, if somebody plays reasons that the sports complex and they're smoking, vaping, chewing, whatever, what is the person to do if, if you have someone in the community that they're gonna see that? What do they do? Do they call the law?
Well, they can call, they can call the, the deputy out there, or they can call the administrator out there. The administrator can go out and say, you know, uh, if you don't put that out, we're gonna get a ticket.
And then, and then who gets that ticket? He calls the law?
Called, he called it, and he gives the ticket, yes.
My legal...
Okay. And the same thing at a boat ramp or whatever?
Absolutely.
So, but in terms of our employees, um, see, that's not something that I, I wanna do. I, I mean, I, I would like to rather see it, you know, you have, we have a policy that's a feature. And if you're caught the first time, this is what happens, if you're caught the second time, maybe it's an, a, or, um, reprimand, you know, written, you know, second written, and then if you wanna go to the combination of whatever, but it should be a policy, but, oh, that's a big call on one of our employees, just, we can handle that, what...
Well, I think what's our policy is you all have developed, we handle the employees, I like, yeah. That's actually definitely my policy. Fifty dollars is just for...
For the public.
For the public, often employees aren't used, so your employee is getting off easier than the general public, so...
Well, they may lose their job after having any...
They're gonna get the ticket.
Uh, that's pretty clear.
Well, I tell you what, if my guy, oh, he's not popular, and he calls one time, he's captivated him, the next time, he's got yet to get...
Okay, so it's pretty strict, one time you get down, one time you're gone. That's pretty clear.
He can, he would carry smoking, uh, if that's part of the property now.
My, my people probably...
Somebody wasn't using that idea, did you see all that vaping stuff this year in Franklin County?
Yes.
Yesterday, they had a...
Union High School.
At, where?
At the Union High.
Union High School, and they added all, uh, the table floor of cops, kids, you, was that getting back to the vaping side?
They all, the law's on the fence, the fence on another street, and the center post, it makes it up.
I like the idea of letting the employees with the box, and you'll have to sign off at the appropriate time. Which is what you can't do, you can't, folks can do all that, and if you do, we'll deal with that and out. Now, if the employee is off duty, he's down, he's a bug around the street, like, general public, when they sign off, he's like a...
But we make policies, so we are the ones that, I'm assuming, that would have to make the policy for the employees, this is what happens and this is what happens, is that right? Or is that something that he does?
That's what the law is saying, turn your head over here, so you can have a seat in the box.
Yeah, right.
So let me present another scenario. Say, we're having a festival at Hampton, at, um, Forest Castle Park, and it's an all day festival. And I think people understand, we don't want smoking for families around the festival ground, that we're making it so they can go in the parking lot and smoke, or get in their car and smoke, and then go back to the festival. And I, this is something to consider. So if someone's walking their boat, they can't smoke a cigarette in the parking lot and then walk their boat.
I think that's what we're planning, I just wanna start off, just in a little concept.
I think, you see, crime everywhere, everywhere, young, taking, smoking, and, you know, mostly...
You know, you don't drink at Forest Castle Hall, right?
Right.
Okay. How many times have you had a complaint of somebody drinking at Forest Castle Hall?
Yeah, I know of, please. Uh, this is, I was, one of, it was Friday night Saturday night, they had this...
A barbecue?
But, yeah, it was awesome, and I, I was sitting there with my family, you know, seriously performing in that, that show. And we enjoyed it, wonderful music. And I saw nobody smoking in our business. Now, I did see, uh, somebody with a dog on the...
That's allowed.
Huh?
That is allowed.
That is allowed, and I turned to my wife and said, that, I'm seeing a dog, or a therapy dog, I would have a little problem with that.
No, dogs are allowed at Forest Castle Park. And from what I understand, um, they, whoever is working, say, a festival, they ask for no smoking or vaping in state area, but out on other parts of the ground, people have, have smoked, is what I understand.
I smoked no big deal, but I, I, I enjoyed going, cause I was probably an adult, it's a, something that can't anymore. After I put smoking, I started traveling by the boat, it was kind of a big shiver in the dog.
Well...
I put that dog in his shoes, um...
But I know, having young children and being out at the sports complex, and I, I, that's what I am looking at, so that's why I keep fixing. I have stood right there, this year, with people vaping, and I mean, it's like you're behind the, the mosquito trucks with that stuff flowing out. And I have seen people out there smoking cigarettes at carnivals and at, um, at, at gangs, you should say gangs. I've seen that, I've seen a lot of it.
All right, they do, they can shut them down on.
Yes, sir.
Good.
What's on that, what's on that?
I don't know, there's a, any on the object, are you going to add to this? I think, I'm late, supposed to discuss the master, okay, I do. You, you want me to go through mine by mine, I haven't even had an opportunity to review and have any questions? Do I have any? I have not looked at one, is it any different than it was for the last one?
Yes.
Updated.
It's updated. Um, we did complete the airport property tree removal, the onsite tree removal, um, under a grant, let's sign it, we have received a sign and hardware votes, um, that will be moving forward, those signs are, are large. And, um, it takes, it's going to take some time to get around, but we are making progress on that. Um, the Forest Castle Hall re-prepared, um, there was a meeting with Department of Corrections, they will now, will not allow O C's inmate labor on that re-prepared, so that will have to be contracted out.
Um, what about lobbies, there's that on the somewhere, lobby at Forest Castle Park?
No, ma'am, we completed the lighting in the parking lot.
Is that our notice? You know, I think some knew that.
Yes, sir, we completed that, we completed all the lighting projects at, um, the Seaboard Ramp and the Forest Castle Park and the Forest Castle Hall parking lot, um...
So around the Forest Castle Home, sorry, the pages, do we have that on the list yet, or we're just still calling?
No, that's on the C I P for next year.
Okay.
That was included in the Capitol on recruitment.
Okay.
We have, we have, well, they're on some...
Okay, and for nature.
Yeah, that means that can be around this, that would not...
Yeah, so somebody's gonna phone.
Uh, the Sean Happy Boat Ramp mobile home renovation, I do have an essay on that. Um, that was a possibility to, um, staff thought maybe we could move that, but we're gonna keep the fire station and have that, um, to help firefighters. But the estimate that staff provided was about forty-five thousand dollars to move and renovate. So my suggestion, I think we're at the point where maybe we can ask, um, GoDeals to list on our onsite. I did not want to do that during fall season and fishing and all that, but I think during, you know, the fall and winter, that's something maybe we could sell. And I don't, if, if we could just get enough, if they would just take it, move it, just take it. I, I think that we can come up with what we consider to be a fair price and list it on GoDeals.
I don't, I, I look at, from the outside, when I was thinking about something yesterday, I was seeing, the outside, it was long, and stuff, dollars, it's about a car. And to move those things, the double wire, and that's taken half, and to move it, I just don't... We're, certainly, that's a good candidate for putting them down the list, it'd cost us.
That's why I like to put lists on the guest...
But, just sit there with me, get forty-five thousand, all that, you know?
And then they can...
They move it, clean it up.
That's what we're doing with the towers, um, that we have, is that those are listed on GoDeals right now. And I would be, I would be thrilled if they just were disassembled and taken away because that would be a cost to us, to pay somebody to disassemble the tower.
All right, I have my lesson on that. But I, I'm not far from forty-five thousand dollars on that building to move.
No, sir, that was not my suggestion, that's...
I know.
That's another can, that's a whole park.
Forty-five thousand, but, but forty-five thousand never man moved.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, I see, the school is a abandoned building, they got whole, about ten, all being in good shape.
Well, sure, it's gonna get hung on.
He got one for the same activity, I don't know, that's a whole of homes, yeah, I don't know. So I don't know, I don't get one, I thought it was on...
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, I've been off to living on that building. I don't know. I've had several people call me, you know, probably Shore House, it's out here, they don't own a hospital site. And the benefit that residents of this town get from that, they were wondering if the county would assist them in getting one of those buildings and they're just not on their site that you own, the Captain Parket. I don't know, I would, uh, I think the county is just gonna put out another chain, they're getting out.
That's, that right, it's getting double one, stop, seven, eight, all square, put it blue, uh, what do you talk about in that?
What they need to do is, um, and I, uh, saw, they could assist on that, because she kind of ran on that, you know? And she told me last night that they had agreed for them to stay there for years, and that, but they would have to take care of the, uh, uh, the ground, you know, mowing. But what, what they need to do is perhaps this building, see if a school horse will go make one of them down directly. And then, um, if we stop, if we stop from vaping, if we stop popping, I would not, most of them, but the city's probably got more... I wonder, you know more about what the cities in terms of vaping, popping.
That's, that's the park.
Right. I think, you know, uh, if you see that we're gonna be advertising, I don't know where all of them's at, but they may be a lot better than the boards are gonna make it to that.
I did, I did, I did miss pay, um, candy lovers, um, phone number several weeks ago. And I'd like her to call him, I don't know if they had any voting available. I don't know if he's looking at...
He didn't say anything last night about that, but, oh, I'm after. I've been contacted by so many people about that. Well, they have a lot of, yeah, they're gonna be just pleasant and sweet and all that. I would not want that to go away.
We're gonna name it, yeah. Lord, I might be jumping ahead of myself with this airport soda farm. That we spent, I guess we spent a million on a thing, building, setting.
I believe it's a...
All any medicine that I believe since we've done that is that soda farms now are becoming more efficient than we had out.
That was my understanding from, um, that was my understanding with speaking with these entities. But there may be a possibility that that may be changing. I think in the beginning, there were, the larger parcels were being considered.
Well, I'm not saying all of this, but, but it just is, to me, I just think from dreams. You don't have a market for it. I'm all for it.
I know there's an issue with the type of the transition lines, and I don't, I don't know if the airports are being candid for this type of project, but, um, it's something that we can consider.
But, but putting a soda farm, it also has a period of suspension, which is free, it's tied to grid. And the further you're away from the suspension, the less valuable the property becomes to soda farms. I know about all of that. And they are, they're contemporary, you know?
Any other questions on this master contract, Ruth?
Oh, the rest of it all looks pretty good.
I'm happy it's answered, you take it, I think I heard it out of this, so...
Well, we have some springs now, they, we're, we're, you're a little up there on that, yeah?
On Hampton Springs, we have, uh, the electricians have signed a contract. Um, they do not know exactly when they can start the job, they have several projects going on. Um, we have asked for a one week notice so we can make sure the inmate crew is out there at the same time to run the water and the plumbing line. So we're hoping they can get to it before the end of October, but, um, we're kind of at the electrician's mercy at this point. But we are expecting every week to see where we are with that project.
So we've identified the electrician, private?
It's A O K Electric.
I don't know anybody, whichever one you all chose, but I know you got the proper folks and all that. So, uh, so we're back to progress. I did a little drive through and since it's falling down in the grass, I use the first, it's nice for them, but we, we're doing all we can do if that's going up.
I was out there last night, um, for the weigh-in for the Palmetto berries, um, for quite a while, and I did observe that. And my expectation is that once we get caught up with mowing and some of the projects we have going on at the sports complex, that that is something that we can, we can get there.
Now, I've, I've seen numerous times supervisor of electricians concrete bed, Ruth. I just, it doesn't take that long for a ten by ten concrete bed.
We're waiting on the supervisor of electricians.
Does she have that in her book?
I don't know, I, I know that as far as that, we're at the point where I got a couple of times, you know, are you ready? I think she wanted to get through whatever, um, work she was doing, but I'll be happy to reach back out to her again.
Well, that's on the outside, you know, that storm, I'll imagine, which also down, was, was tearing on the roof, do that like today. You know, other, the concrete truck coming in, I just don't see why I'd say, six or a month or a year or two... You know, other traffic, the concrete truck coming in, I just don't see why I'd say, six or a month or a year or two years for a little concrete bed to be removed.
It doesn't take that long, it's just, we try to, um, we try to go by priority on the list. And I would say that, um, we tried to get some other projects finished first, and, but I'll, I'll reach back out to her and see if she's ready.
For, um, you know, for our, our voting machine to get wet or whatever it is, you know, carrying it in the warehouse. But, one of the frustrating things that I've experienced in my time in the store is how long it takes to get things done. And not much of a few, but we, we spent on the inmate crews and Mr. Oakley to do the lock stuff, like, books.
Very cool.
And it was the motivation to our local contractors and our local community, if we did out, don't want to vote for some of these smaller jobs, we go in and get them done. And that's what we did.
Yeah, that's what we did at Fort Chapel, at last.
That's what we did out there, and so finally, and where you, you got a block man in there, you need to do one job, that's a thorough job.
Well, I was just wondering, um, this is a little out of the box, but, you know, I'm just going to think about what it costs us to build the rest of the Seanhatchie. And what it costs us for the building out at the road department, which is astronomical. Why can't we subcontract ourselves? Like, say, rent this place, maybe ten or somebody else to subcontract it, and we just heard, just want to do this only, just want to do this. And surely, if it costs two hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars for restrooms, why, why can't we do that, come on up?
You can contract it, what you do is you, it's a separate deal for each particular, um, thing, plumbing, whatever, you can do that. And if you do it one time and determine if you save money, then you can continue on, and if you find that you didn't save money, then you can stop it, I'm sure.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that would save us money, it would give more local people an opportunity, you know, like, like a local plumber, or, or a, a local electrician, instead of, it would, it would play. A lot of things we get out of town people that went to the business.
Well, I think on the, if I'm not mistaken, it's how it works, I thought that they did employ the local.
You probably need higher local stuff company.
Right, right, I remember that so much now, I do, I wasn't there to see if that was done. But I think when we, um, when we contracted with, uh, a general contractor, that they do utilize local stuff to do this.
No, they do it for, they do, you know, you know how it's explained, sometimes they do this, or, I'm sorry, but they are.
Yeah, yeah, it's true, you know.
And, and I was kind of, you know, if there's a, a way that we could get the job done and save money by contracting it ourselves, you know. We, we hired a plumber, we hired a electrician, we hired a concrete man, we hired a roofer, whatever.
You know, let's go back to Fort Chapel Hall, we got their plate all screwed up and something that roots, and I would, I'd recommend that you get a, a lot of roofer to do that.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, you know, I would, I had uneasy feelings about inmates, like, they were tight, tight in those screws down in the beginning, but I didn't express that.
Well, that's why we asked you to see and come out and, and recall myself.
Right, you would probably have to, uh, could you get, could we crush, rest of the rubber?
We'll have to. Yeah, we'll have to.
Have to, was that part of our business policy, or our policy?
It's part of our close policy, that we have, we have written specs, and that we have specs, we have records that we send out those written specifications, and then we receive close for net close.
That's a factor, when everything's done, and then have to go out the phone and bid process.
Well, if, if it's under a certain elder mouth, I would have to look.
Well, I know, uh, this is a big building, and, uh, those new screws they use in the middle roof, about a quarter feet, they're expensive, but it didn't drop. Well, they, they, the problem is the holes they're back in the hole, what's the problem?
I believe that they're back in alley, other ways, where you can, you can go in and, um, actually have an anchor and tighten back down, is what I understand.
My experience on, well, we can buy out the, the overstrut and have a little group rubber running. Well, then you put it down, that little rubber series, and then it looks like a track out.
Yeah.
That'd got one where the rubber running covered up, doesn't know.
Okay.
I, I want to go back then, uh, to Hampton Springs, the park, I guess. Um, what is the, what is your vision, Melinda, for, once we get this, um, electrical all done? What, what is the, what is the vision, I, I, you know, what, what's it gonna look like, what's it gonna have, what is it, you know, what are we gonna do exactly?
Well, there will be a, as far as the site itself, I believe the site has had, is it, is it, I mean, the park, and, you know, what's the vision for the park? So that it's not embarrassing, I mean, and I, I shared this with everyone, but I was in Tampa, and they got up and they talked about the eighth county, just on this tax form. The one thing that they said about Tampa County was Hampton Springs. Well, my hope would be that either when our, when we have inmate labor available, or if we are able to bring on another squad. I know that the bathrooms need to be painted, I would love to open the bathrooms back up. If we have someone on site, all the fencing needs to be repaired, I'm, the, the parking lot looks okay to me. But obviously, if we have, if we have personnel, whether it's an inmate squad or our own personnel available, without upkeep of the park, that would make a big difference. So, um, I haven't jumped too far ahead, we're still struggling with having the sites put in, and then we'll have to advertise for a site host. And go through that whole, um, process of who's going to do what, and the job and duty, who's doing the responsibility. And then we would systematically go through the park and identify what needs to be repaired, what improvements need to be made. And hopefully, um, if we are able to obtain extra help, then we can have a more, a healthier cycle as far as upkeep of all of our parks. Not, not just that one in particular, but I'm hoping that if we have someone on site, it would at least help stop some of the damage and the degradation to the site itself.
I think it'd be a wonderful park to, to be tabled, and, um, that's also, I don't know if we want to go into playground equipment there. Just really ditch off the side, feet and pot, and figure out how they're gonna have a standard.
But this one's working, we're reunion, I just hope that this time next year, and I'm not sure, talking about this, but this project, like, this is a page to reclaim, this, this project has been going on a long time.
I, I.
I hope we can get it done, you know, hope we can move along.
I'll finish on good news. After the word about this. Uh, can you give me a little short report on the next little upside? LaLonda is the, uh, personal, I think going, and she, all night, we've got the building complete, and the, and moved into the building, we did sign it as a test for one. And he's acting, he's, soon we can follow line around, and one of the electric farms will be ready to demolish the old building, and open the gate back up. Now, I understand that Hampton's got its motor grader, and grading, and that we, that's a work close, but gotta get the building out of there first. And he prepares, then we get the electrical disconnect from to get it demolished. And then, rather than, one of the motor grader, she's gonna have to prepare some of the, um, time, you know, lift. So when my little thing, we got here ninety-five minutes quick, invite you out to the tour, and I was off the street home.
They did a very good job.
They did, they did an excellent job. And I have to, we, uh, we bring this up to this, that was on, finish on top of this. It costs about sixty thousand dollars a year to hire an inmate crew, and, uh.
Fifty-seven something, yeah.
All right, and you get about six or eight guys, I've seen them out there, and, you know, you got one man, Mr. Oakley. He's out there doing all the work, and you got six guys, one of them. I just don't know that's an efficient use of this inmate labor they give. Now, there's, there's these great things for them, that's pick up trash on the highway, they can hit that car, because that's what they're trying to do. But there's certain times when it's, it's really like, uh, it's the way the men talk.
I have heard that the skill set of the inmates that we receive now versus the inmates that we received ten years ago has greatly changed.
Decreased.
Well, as far as skills, as far as machinery work, electrician, things like that, my understanding is that Mr. Oakland has to teach them everything he has. I owe it to them, and then they're helpful, but in, I, I would say that there are times in certain processes where they are standing around because they're not very helpful. But then, when they're, you know, mowing or, or doing something else, that's something they can do, um, it just depends.
Or if you gotta dig a ditch to run a wire down, that'd be helpful there for this one.
Right.
You know, you got eight shovel, eight men, it's like, I'll just dig a little ditch.
Right.
Well, where's that at?
I don't know yet.
Come on, my history knows.
I, I.
I'll, I'll go first.
I'll hold mine up. That's LaLonda, and, on this, you know, the last meeting board, uh, did the Cedar Island Road project, it's a D B Y, because it, uh, it, I, I, I'm like, I'm, uh, I'm, uh.
LaLonda, you gonna talk about our letting lose?
I was.
Uh, okay, I, that's what I'm waiting for.
Okay, well, next on the list, uh, is, uh, if we're ready to move forward, the board should discuss the Astor Act S E P funding, you said.
I thought it was about third, I was, yes, second.
I have a small handout for y'all, and I apologize that we're not in the topic. Melinda and I worked for a reason to try to gather this, and all of this information from you, so it was not ready on Friday. Okay, the first page I would like you, um, to see is out of the S E P, which I've become quite familiar with. And it is an individual project, project description. The reason for that is that I wanted you to see what other counties are doing with their funds. And that's, I don't, this isn't necessarily something we, we have to review unless you just want to. But, um, I wanted you to have an understanding of what everybody else is doing, not just Jefferson County. Hoping that, um, you would, you would see what types of projects are eligible, and what other counties are doing with their funds.
Well, for that, I'll see stormwater, uh, so that's something that I'm experiencing on this thing for Seanhatchie.
Yes.
And just for, you know, our traffic and our, our, somehow, whether to get around these boat ramps, I don't know, I haven't had a chance to look and see, to see anything that, like that is on here, even if it's not. It certainly doesn't mean, I'm assuming that it can't be done.
The second handout, um, I am giving you is a synopsis of the funding that we have available, and just some potential uses of our funds. This is not, this is just, I wouldn't say you could do this, you could do that, um, I would not say that staff has an opinion about what you choose, it's just to put it all in perspective. And what I'd like to, what I'd like, would like you to see is the first part explains, um, the process for remaining the S E P and the timeline. The second part of this is the funding that we are scheduled to receive over fifteen years. And then at the bottom of the first page is the eleven eligible activities. So this is very important, and I'd like to read that, see all of that, okay. Um, number one is restore and protection of natural resources, ecosystems, fisheries, marine, and wildlife habitat, beaches, and coastal wetlands of the Gulf Coast region. Number two is mitigation of damage to fish, wildlife, and natural resources. Number three is implementation of a federally approved marine coastal or comprehensive conservation plan, including fisheries monitoring. Number four is workforce development and job creation. Number five is improvement to or on state parks located in coastal areas affected by the deep water erosion oil field. Number six is infrastructure projects benefiting the economy or ecological resources, including port infrastructure. Number seven is coastal flood protection and related infrastructure. Number eight is planning assistance. Number nine is administrative process combined with the act. Number ten is promotion of tourism in the Gulf Coast region, including recreational fishing. And number eleven is promotion of the consumption of seafood harvested from the Gulf Coast. Now, we took this information a step further and made several scenarios, created several scenarios for the board to, um, to review to see if there are some projects that you would have particular interest in. Now, um, let me, let me ask you to look at number six, because there has been some interest, you know, we talked about Katie Rose. So as an example, number six, there are, there are projects for dirt containment road projects for stormwater management and to prevent runoff from flooded dirt roads to flow into adjacent tributaries. Opa-Loosa County currently has in a group project where they are using their funding to pave a dirt road because when there is, um, when there is flooding, that this causes sediment to run into a tributary, and it, and eventually makes its way to, to the, to the Gulf. So that would be an example of a paving project.
Somebody to make a bop house around Keaton Beach Boat Ramp, how could we incorporate this into that, there's not a page for it there now?
Look, it's not even a lot, it's back there.
There's not?
I don't, I don't know.
So, are you talking about Keaton Beach Boat Ramp, right near on Keaton Beach, to do a hot?
About that.
Oh, no, that there's not, that's not, that could be dirt containment.
I don't know that that was qualified, and my, that's something that we can certainly present, we can certainly ask that question. My initial feeling is I'm not sure that that would be approved, because there is, there is access to the, to the boat ramp there now. Now, this would obviously improve the access to the boat ramp, but I'm not sure, that's maybe the gray area. Also, my understanding is that the property at the Keaton Beach Coastal Park is ecologically sensitive. That's considered wetlands, if I'm not mistaken, so I don't know what the permitting process would be. I don't know that that's a question that I have about a buyback in that area, but we can certainly ask if.
Well, until we, you know, find out, the question is gonna be out there in mama, is there something that we can do? So, what we have to do is find out.
Well, what I would like to do is to receive some input from the board, and if you have some potential projects, then we can certainly, we can certainly research that and see if that's a possibility. And then go forward with, if we would amend the S E P, or what we need to do to, to follow through with this project.
Now, I think, I, I was gonna tell you what mine would be, and each one can tell you what theirs are. As I mentioned last time, I think that we should be fixing what we've got before we start adding more. And that would be the stormwater, uh, uh, runoff problems that we have in Seanhatchie. That would be the traffic congestion that we have at Keaton Beach Boat Ramp and Seanhatchie Boat Ramp. To me, that's priorities, I've talked to a lot of people lately, and every one of them, I had business owners from Seanhatchie call me and said, you're right on the spot with what you suggested. Um, those are things that I, I think that would, that would be something I'd like to see. Uh, I also discussed with a lot of people lately, the Hudson part, and. And many people have said we would like to see Hodges Park, um, renovated or tore down and, and put a top notch, uh, park there. Lots of families use that park. We have visitors from all over that go there. So I'd like to see, um, Hodges Park done. We've talked about dredging the Keaton Beach, uh, the canal. Um, we talked about Frank Warrior, um, you know, that's, um, area that's away from the congested area that might be worth small, uh, considering for smaller boats that's already got a, uh, water access there. More I talk to people, nobody knows, but it's the consensus of most people that was our precious grasses that we have in this county that we'll never get a permit to dredge a canal. And they go back to the ten million dollars that Dr. Poole spent and with the clout that he had and it wasn't done, so I'm not sure that, that that's something that we'll ever get. But that's Pam Feigl, that's her, that's my thing I'd like to see, Johnny.
Now, let me remind everyone, we are currently, we currently have in our budget a million dollar project for dredging Keaton Beach Canal and, um, that'd be part of Steenhatchie Canal. This is a reimbursement grant. So all I would know to do is to ask for the board to amplify their proj, to give me their projects and then rank them so we can, so we can plan financially for what you want to do first. They, and I, you know, I would say we need to take into consideration how much that costs. I don't know if you want.
Was it about the dredging?
No, no, I'm saying dredging is funded within our budget.
Okay.
But none of these projects are.
You're gonna delete Sam's.
Well, my priority would be the stormwater because we have people that have water in their homes. That's important to me.
Now, on this stormwater, just to make you aware, um, we had an L M S meeting last week and it was consensus of the L M S group that we apply for a hazardous mitigation grant, um, to, to start this process as far as stormwater, um, improvement countywide. But my suggestion to the group was to consider using our, our B P money for the Steenhatchie portion of it since that is the coastal portion and possibly Keaton Beach. Or to use it at least as a map for our H and B P fund. So, um, we believe, from what I understand, we can use these funds as map funds for other grants. So that's something to keep into consideration and we'll know more about that as, as the process goes on.
Yeah, share about list.
Absolutely.
I, from personal observation and from having been contacted by several persons, my list of priorities for plot three and B P money would include this Steenhatchie project with the flooding, if that was qualified. Don't know what the scope of the work would be, I'm not an engineer, but there's folks that can figure out if we can do anything, um, what the cost can be, if that would be something I would go on favorably for that community. I personally inspected the Hodges Park. Uh, it could go in two ways depending on the funding, we could tear it down star over. I think it could be renovated into a pretty nice building, bathrooms and the big thing there. Biggest tables, I think, pretty good shape. So that would be something that I would be supportive of using the B P fund. And the, uh, get a stamp of mention and start to put ten million dollars and then get a, a permit to dig this channel. Well, it's part of the Gulf out there and now it's kind of all the river that's not in the secret. It's the dirt. Well, I can't even say what I've been, number five, uh, kind of all the river from the end of the Fiddles and landing of the, of the other landing down there. Consider one of those, whichever one it is, and, and you could probably dredge out of it and, and get a people or channel. Now, that started off with being passed, uh, somehow, but I don't know that it would take any congestion off of Keaton Beach. It's just a person, so it was probably worth looking into. We don't own any property down there. I've heard something, uh, earlier about a ten acre deal out there that fell through by the way side.
I looked.
So I don't know.
So is that like your priority?
I, I would say that it would be something to look at.
Okay.
Who else's property there?
Uh, I think the paper mill kept ownership, so that's harder. So that would be B P, I think.
And I think, um, I may be wrong, but, um, I, I think that someone else has first option, uh, to purchase that.
Okay.
And they may, I mean.
Maybe put it in the book and watch it. Yeah, whatever. Well, now, those are something I identify now. There's a problem with sandbar out of the Beach, Beach Canal. I think, is that sandbar that Howard keeps talking about? Didn't, didn't bow it out and move, see that, so he gets trapped out of the water? That's core engineers running, like, there's nothing we do that's like that. All right, we already going that route.
Uh, we have, um, more than one and the last I knew, it was a cleaning issue with them. There was one point several years ago, we worked with them and they had the funds available, that because of our agreement with the core engineers, they will only, they, they will only, I think there's a, I think there are, uh, money cap, I think it's a money cap. They'll, they'll only spend them as a maintenance and we determined, I think it was a million dollars, that that would be one dredging. So at the time, when they did the, the depth studies to see how much sand it was, there was only one little section that had like forty of sand in it because we were actually going to piggyback off their, their contract and dredge the canal portion. They were going to dredge the channel, we were going to dredge the canal, but at that time, it wasn't that bad. So, um, I don't think to discuss them any further and now that we're ready to dredge, the last I heard, they didn't have money available.
All right. We got a top one money, B P. None of that has been sent.
Not yet.
Yeah, that's, that's, we've outplayed it. Rock and roll dredge. You know, all right, that's a priority for that. You said there's a million dollars in that fund?
No, I believe we, I would say we have four million, I would have to double check.
Is that how many you start the dredging, you know, our number one dredging priority, if I recall, was to make Beach Canal. If, would, if money is available, could we check out that sandbar out in Corey Channel? Call that project?
I don't know if we could or not. I'm sure we would have to.
We'd have to go to the core engineer and get their blessing. That takes ten years.
It would take longer than Corey not to tell.
When, when are we going to start for the dredge or, or?
Um, someone from Langton will be at the next board meeting to give you a quarterly update on the dredging project and also the rail project because that's going on at that round. I think we are, we are hoping to have a grant application for the design, um, engineering and permitting, I believe from what I recall. Um, it's what we're waiting on now. Treasury has approved and again, we're hoping to have a grant agreement, um, within the next, next twenty-three years.
You know, I've checked about totally cut off roads and the whole, it's, uh, USA core of engineers, you know, core of engineers have to do with upland and highway. They, they manage everything in the world. I mean, you can't. I, I understand that high land is most of. Those two mile over, you got to go meet the lessons of Washington, D C, core of engineers to pave the road.
I think that's a lot of things when we're waiting on the core engineers.
That went really slow on me.
They did, they are.
Right, I mean, you know, I'll be, there are a few options, you know, in town, we can get some done.
Well, obviously, thank you for something real pretty fast, but we're talking about that.
Yeah, one of them get a couple of books. One of them get off on that tonight.
Okay, that longer?
That's all.
Okay.
Put a hand in there for me.
Well, I do appreciate your, uh, your focus towards this group. It's imperative that we make use of it. Steenhatchie is a bad choice for some reason. That doesn't happen all the time. That's gonna go on for a long time down there. So with that being said, the first time I had asked about our B P for still, I thought the question of can we utilize these funds for infrastructure? And I got a response that we could get, we looked it over and we could use that. We could have done that before we entered the senior deposit of acquiring them, acquiring our questions or pay codes. We could have went through the infrastructure before we introduced the deposit. But now it seems like we're back to square one. We're talking about that, that's, that's, we got a clean place. And now what we need to know is we need to focus on what's going on down in the Bay Area. B P, Steenhatchie are the gems of this channel and you get tanks, okay? People would talk about Steenhatchie, B P, all of these things. People from Germany and, well, all of them. That's important and we need to get that done. So the, thank you for the utilizing the B P also to maintain or upgrade the infrastructure. And that's where it was talked to, other than Steenhatchie, you know, the past five thousand, we need a strong grant. No matter what they may say, they can't tell a channel. If they will cut a channel anywhere in the world and prove themselves, it is two as now and then it's a pen wash now. Adam said.
Mm-hmm.
So if we prove themselves to be a danger, I don't think, uh, we were able to do long term in this specific case with this one, but to redirect and put this one down in the industry. And that was pronounced about Coke now. And anyone that happened with Steenhatchie, these first few projects going on, people went into the tank for a hundred bucks. So I appreciate the focus for this group, especially down there in Steenhatchie. When we had our last one, this recent one, we had three down some borders, three down two. Two, a lot of waters, we were stuck in that little meeting we had, two one thousand year rate events back in fact. I've heard that it happened. Steenhatchie itself, it really, really hurt itself. About nine, they all were.
Do you have a sense, ever?
You know, Steenhatchie, and I said this before, I never thought that I would ever see parent counties have a, a growth problem, a growth issue. But we're, we're on, we're on the edge of that, we're about to experience that in Steenhatchie. Uh, Steenhatchie is growing, it's growing more and more. And you know, we talked to the people down there, we told them that we were gonna start looking at growth issues down there. And I think that that's something that, that we need to do because we never had to worry that growth and plan for growth, but now we do.
All right, good deal.
Yeah. Is that all? Commissioner, uh, yeah?
My head felt free for one. I should have been, I was gonna do you from, from taking care of the water in Steenhatchie to the, community championship at our K G. Now, they ain't over in the world one person who have all this knowledge and working on just these projects without some help. So you have enough help at the head to help you do what you need to.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then, my head felt free. Looks like you got a pretty good staff, a good staff, not a real staff.
God, it's been a surprise.
Yeah, the same thing. The water that happens, that is happening in Steenhatchie. It's the same thing that's happening in Taylor County, like the, out there in the district square. People went in the low side of areas, low side of that way in and they built the, they put a trailer thing and when the water comes up with, it settles. Now, I, I talked with somebody in Jacksonville and he told me he's done some investment profits in the Bay. Uh, he don't live there, but he invested money there. And he invested in the low area in order to make some money. And when he comes up to me about he had engineers study done, feasibility study done, where did he get this money from? Who's doing the feasibility study? Who's doing the engineering study? But he bought the land, he, you know, that's what he does. Now, we, we need to jump through hoops and do what we need to do, but we don't need to forget the matches. The matches of people is not in Steenhatchie. The matches of people is all part of their plan. We got, and constructed, uh, roads and stuff like that. I understand the S P T for the Restore Act money can be done and spent. Twenty-five miles of the designated area. Now, I don't think we, we talked about the B P dollars, you know, what?
Not much.
No, not a lot.
Sure, really.
Well, two years, yeah. They both.
I lost my job.
We have to get into the marina.
Okay, five years, lost my job.
Okay.
There was some in tackle, we would not get twelve hundred million dollars.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why.
But not as much as other counties.
Yeah, so I think we need to look at and spread it around rather than your, that can have to be big. How about the grant due? These particular areas need some attention.
So what I, I would say as far as the flooding, the, let me, let me make sure I clarify. That hazardous mitigation grant program would be something that we would look at countywide, stormwater. It would not just be in Steenhatchie or the beaches. My suggestion is, or my question to the L M S committee and to the board, because ultimately you'll have to approve it, is if we are able to use our Restore Act funding, either as a map for this stat project or if we can use our Restore Act funding for the, the coastal areas, that would free up more money from the hazardous mitigation grant program to use in the remainder of the county. So that, that is my attempt to, you know, balance that out and spread out, um, our grants as much as we can. So the H and B P would not be focused on the coastal areas, it would be countywide. And we also did approve, or we also did apply for a river grant from Quinny River Water Management District and we did not, we were not approved, but we will continue to work with Quinny River to, to, um, obtain whatever grant comes to hand to help with stormwater issues countywide.
Okay. I like that. I, I mean, that's crazy thing I heard, but when I read this part of the Taylor County, it looked like it was seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for, two hundred thousand dollars for a state.
Right.
Two hundred thousand dollars for planning, eleven million dollars for acquisition.
And that is the way the original budget was structured. Um, so the reason that that was submitted that way is, my understanding, I wasn't here, but the original committee and then our, the, the information that was given to the consultants was that we were interested in acquisitions and we wanted to use every dime of that money we could to buy property and even if it meant we spent four million dollars on acquisition and we just let it sit for years. That was the original plan from what I understand. So no, not my kind of a budgeted for construction or for feasibility studies or engineering or design work or any of that, which is why we need to amend the S P T. So once I receive inputs from all of y'all, then we'll know which direction we need to go with. So, once I receive input from all of y'all, then we'll know which direction we need to go with, or to amend the FPT, and then we can go through that amendment process, and as part of that process, we will need to amend our budget. Does that help?
So it'd help, and it's, and what, Commissioner Murphy said we back off on that square one.
Yeah, we are.
Because of the two one on the year flood, I mean, we had two floods within, what, seven days? Like you made it up.
Like what I said, it was a thousand year flood.
Thousand years, for sure, exactly. I don't care what time it won't make something up, you know, the climate change, we can still see that. You know, I'll be spending about a little out of mine in the next ten years, fifteen years, with that I can afford. So, uh, now, are we going down there and, and, and we're just designing them, keep them out of their home, and not let them go back? Are we gonna let them go back and go, and then they?
Well, something else that the local litigation, um, the LMS group discussed was possibly using some of the grant funds, um, to acquire a system, and buy them out, and let them relocate. That, that is a possibility, that was discussed with another area. But I think the, maybe the better, another solution I would say, is to, um, to, to design and engineer a stormwater, um, some type of stormwater system in that area, where, you know, you can bore and, um, drain the water away from that area. Because, um, there's a particular area in being happy, the water doesn't have anywhere to go. It has to be humped out, it has to be carried somewhere else, there's nowhere else for it to go, and there are homes in that area that are repetitive losses, that's where it's at. So there are a couple of possibilities, um, typically the LMS committee will make a decision and then bring that to the board. As you recall, um, one of the projects this last year was elevating several homes. And so that's not something that's being considered at the time, this time around.
Now, if the level of the being happy level is up here, in these low areas where the houses are, is lower than the, or equal to the river, we could all the five, two, one, two, in there, and stuff go on.
Well, and what you have to be careful about, is that you don't design it so you're letting the water in, instead of letting the water out, and that's something that has to be taken. I mean, we don't want to create a situation where we put in a drainage system that just causes flooding from, from a coastal, from a, um,
Title.
A title.
Yeah, you have to look back with, you know, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, neither, but you know, I have on this board with the Quinny River man, Quinny River. And then all the folks in the plane got the little stuff coming down in the dark of the day. And they digging retention pond, millions of gallons of holes at the time, I mean, I think you got a ton of dick, six million gallons, retention pond hole in the mountain. Try what they got there already.
And that may be a possibility, um, under the area.
But when that hit full, and it runs over to the plain, this has been running all the time, what happens?
Well, you can't control the water that falls out of the sky.
Yep.
Which is why I'm gonna do that.
Okay.
So.
I think on the line, um, I think what I'm hearing is we, we would like to see the, the P money used on the coast. These other grants used up here, because I've got flooding in my district that people have their homes have been, you know, lowering their homes, so, um, and I'm sure all of us.
Yeah, all of us.
And that's why I discussed the hazardous mitigation grant program.
Yeah.
Um, and there are several, I mean, we can use, from what I understand, we can use these, um, the mapping funds for some, for other projects, and I would look at that as well. But before, before we leave, um, I, and I think all of us, we got an email from, uh, a group that's been in being happy, I don't know if you've seen that email.
I've heard it, definitely.
But, um, a Mr. Long, I think is his name, he's, um, I understand he's called probably down there, maybe in some low lying areas, and somehow or other they're connected with engineers or something, and they are wanting to propose some sort of, um, stormwater system down there, and I understand from some of my friends in being happy, that they've had a petition go on about, or people decided, some of them told me they did not sign it. Um, and so now this email says that they have a special public meeting.
Invited us to.
And invited us to go, and my understanding is that one of this independent group is doing it kind of self-serving, and I understand that it would not hurt the people of Central Avenue, so I just want your opinion about, oh, I don't have any intentions of going, but I just, you know, do you have a word caution?
Yeah, of course.
Don't go.
Don't go.
Right.
They want, they want to do something, something better.
Right, and, but they, well, they're on the agenda, I've heard that.
So I did email, um, Mr. Pete, and asked him if this was the same presentation that they would be presenting to the Lord on October seventh, and he said, well, it's not the same because it's a longer presentation, because of time it takes.
Three minutes?
Well, it's... It's on the agenda, though, we, I mean.
Well, they need to tell you how long it's gonna take, you know?
Yeah.
And you need to hold up to it, whatever it is, and I, I did, I haven't seen the email, just something.
Well, just forward, um, I, I'm just looking to speak that, because I, I just, you know, got a little leery of independent group that have some provisions maybe that they want to.
They want to buy that, okay.
And, but I think they may want to count me to help with some things, uh, and so I just, you know, I'm a little leery of that, and they all have that.
Do you have that? Do you have it?
Yeah.
Can you, um, scan it?
They all work.
Um, this guy left him, I want him to, I want him to call me back, and, um, I read four pins in the cross here, that I didn't really try to talk.
Me either.
Uh, I didn't want to get involved with a independent developer, you know, saying a lot of things.
They have seen several messages and several emails, and I have not responded, but I feel like it, you know, say, I just don't feel like doing that.
I got one more of them.
Sure.
Two twenty-one, and actually, between it, off two twenty-one to the east, and down to the old Lock Arch, you know?
Uh-huh.
Down the lady and three children walking with a carriage on the road that way. There were five cars behind her on one side, and cars coming on the other side, it's two, uh-huh? And they were honking on with her, because she would be up the road.
It was red, Andy.
Yeah, I, I went by that.
I've been to the border last week, for that.
Well, okay, this happened since last week.
Yes.
And the lady said she, a person involved in it, or something, said she was afraid for her, and those kids walking on that road. You know, I, maybe I need to get, uh, permit from town, take my whole day stuff back. I know we have a lot of people who know a lot of dangers. I know.
For example, I walk through.
Well, when you're out here, when you go up down top of the river, right, when you go over.
We need to take that, boy, I thought, my head felt free, you got a heck of a job, and doing a good job.
Yeah.
My whole district is grown up, and you get the boys to the, when you come off the two twenty-one going, boy, you can't even see the railroad crossing signs through the weeds and stuff, I was like.
If they didn't, it's shorter than that, two guys come from town, that's the way it's been that. And one of them told him, this church told me, Thomas, I, I can't drive a bus, to the church, I gotta meet my daughter, or she has that side of town, I'm gonna go down that. Just above, uh, I should play, you're talking about this man, but, well, he was, well, he was. I said, well, I'm coming from town half to nine, I'll look at it. When I got there, and I got out of that car, that grass was that deep.
Monday, they were cutting that.
They're cutting it though, now.
That, that's it.
I've been there the other day, the weeds, and they're all there.
So it's been grass, it's grassing, that, okay, good going, Pete.
Any more discussion on, uh, uses for the, um, the Restore Act money? This part will go for our last, uh, which is number ten, the board to discuss legislative funding request for a fiscal year twenty twenty.
So I took notes out of the, um, funding request that were submitted to me, and I noticed that there were quite a few ready and frozen that project. And I recall last year, I think it was last year, we had a meeting with the O T, and we were encouraged not to request earmarks for DOT projects. But to, I wanted to clarify, because I know some of y'all maybe have spoken to, um, a representative about particular projects.
Oh, you?
You're allowed, I just wanted to make sure I could clarify.
Okay.
Um, I spoke with Representative Joe's office, they reached out to DOT, and spoke with S T F, who, um, who gave us some guidance, and then today I had a conference call with Dave Sirman, he's from Evans, and they, um, wanted to request that rather than, if you would, rather than submitting, um, individual projects, especially the ones that we've already, we've already listed as priorities, or maybe programs or on the five-year plan, that, um, they wanted to reassure us that they would work with us to meet our needs. And where we could make the most difference is if we request more funding from our legislators to be, um, to be sent to DOT, because they can make sure that they meet our needs, they feel like in that fashion. And the reason that they explained to me is that, um, earmarks don't come with extra money. They, so they have been used, they have been forced to use reserves to pay for earmarks the last year or so, and they do not have any more reserve funding. So if we were to receive an earmark from our legislators for a particular project, either another county's funding would be cut short, or a program that, or a road that we already have programmed, and possibly you have an agreement on, that funding would be cut. So, um, I think the bottom line is that rather than taking the risk that our projects that are already, that are already submitted to DOT or programmed, rather than take a risk that they would be reduced, I would like the board to consider, instead of us submitting these projects, that we instead, when we have our level plate delegation, and when we speak with our legislators, that we ask for extra funding for, for DOT, so they can properly manage these projects.
When we talk to our legislators privately, ask for extra funding for scrap and scope, or just for?
For.
For, for rotating, or what can it?
Right, right, because there's crap, there's, there's crap stop, and then there's two other programs, I know there is, um, there's one program that comes like a sidewalk project that are going on, and there's, the trip project is, is funded that way. So, um, and, and that's ultimately up to you, I just, um, wanted to bring that up to you.
That, that'll miss.
Okay, so if we take out the road project from the list that I have, that leaves courthouse improvements, including security upgrades, um, Doctor's Memorial Hospital Funding Assistant, and emergency class first and founder's vote dock at T and D, um, are those the projects that you would permit to submit?
Can they, can they help with, um, with a car department, is that something that they could, you know, um, and have that, is that, is that something that they would consider, or is that not?
Well, I know that some of these programs, it's a USDA program that actually we could utilize for, um, you know, building the fire stations. I don't know if we could use it for renovation.
Or acquire more, uh, equipment?
I believe that we, I think the USDA grant would fund the equipment. So I do believe that we have, um, an avenue for, for that type, I mean, we can ask, but, um...
There hasn't counted, and they've got earmarks for fire station. My turn.
Would be good to help, you know, just like in T and D, and, and, uh, other places.
I know that, um, we have several fire stations, but we could use some improvement, so.
I could grow the fire station, you know, I mean, would create a fire station.
Because that's what we need to do, set here, there, so, is that what it means, that what it is?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So that'd be, we've been putting down earmarks on.
Okay, so the fire stations?
But, well.
Okay, and then courthouse improvements, I know last year.
We're talking about the west, uh, west station, I've been talking, would create, um, talking, it's, it's fair, people about it, from the island as well. And I was told by a previous administrator that he was submitting getting an earmark for one or more fire stations in Jackson.
Yeah.
So I don't know how hard that is, despite of me, or I'm sure you'd say, not too difficult. Earmark.
Really? Well, I, this is fire, she's having a group of plans for that, has any laid out plans for that, or those D stations?
We have, we have one, yeah, right.
It's that, it's that, it's, but we need to understand, and where that all needs is.
Right, and then maybe you're, we know where it is, a truck section that we're talking about here, in one, in the west bit, in third floor. It's on somebody's private property, in an old shed.
Yes, but.
And I tell it, so like it is the front.
Yes, but you tell the truth.
I tell, and it needs an upgrade. So it needs to be far right, and then maybe you're, whose district it occurs, and where does the truck team split, and you split it, and it's split. Now, there was a discussion, well, after my career, that they need to put the fire station up on Highway nineteen, more close to, I mean, it's less lethal flat, I think, and took them to not even have them north of, of, uh, less lethal, you got a bunch of them between one, Johnson Street, and, and anyway, so. Yeah, but, uh, yeah, I could actually move a piece of property up to Highway twenty there, that was the sale of, and I thought it was terrible, piece of property. Comes in a hole, like some of that, you know, it rains, floods, but, you know, you, you saw what's moving a little further north to, to, uh, get closer to listening. People knew about here where it's at.
Well, it's paved, not less lethal, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, um, courthouse improvements, or your, is that something that we want to request?
What, what we need to do to the store, I'm saying, there are a lot.
We haven't had upgrades in the courthouse and.
Well, I'm thinking, you have to call the Southern L L, but you'll know when you should be there.
They know, right?
We stayed on it, maybe, and one of my boys was downstairs, and he wanted to pay me, that he had to call me to be in, to get us off of L L. He was, I'm doing a project for sale, and he came in, got us off of it.
You don't sell homework in the L L?
I don't know.
You're gonna pay some money on it. So how do you get the work to the one that's in the stuff?
I heard a year on.
In back there, on the button.
And they told us on there, and they asked to give back, and, and we really, we had to come and talk.
I know we need some security improvements, definitely, and we asked for that last year, and we almost got funding. Um, I think the government project was too small, and it really wasn't even enough money to be funded, so we can certainly, um, increase that this year, and ask for specific improvements, um, that are, that are much needed.
Well, at one time, we, um, we discussed, um, safety, and, you know, and it was discussed, and I think we discussed about combining the tax collector and the property appraiser, and, um, you know, have everything out there, and move these state and county back in the courthouse, and it would save a bum of money that we're paying for lease and all the extra, uh, everything that comes with that. Now, if some of the projects is that, uh, something that would be considered?
I don't think that courthouse is big enough, no.
I, I would tell you one thing that I would like to be done, and it's definitely done for a moment in that courthouse. I, I will tell you one thing that I would like to be done, and it's definitely done for mode, and that's for.
Mode, and the.
And you know, because the, the base area is a little round, and it's a, it's kind of inside. And I think, I mean, how many people are there, how many walk in the building, they get, it's, it's an odd opposite, so, I would like people to do that assessment, that there, that there is people that have it.
Now, that's a work, uh, project, I think.
So, you're saying you don't think that, that if, if, if you moved all of the tax collector, property appraiser out there, that would free up a number of rooms for the state attorney?
Well, we got the tax, uh, and the property present are already over here, and where are we going to move them?
I would for the only highway control station, and if they add them out there, and move those two entities out there, free up one house, they could bring that state attorney back over, save a bundle of money.
Uh, we don't, we don't own that property out there, so, if we can, say.
For a hundred years?
I don't remember, I, I hear.
Huh?
I, I hear it.
Oh, it's probably the one problem that he running the last year, had the tax collector has, that's one over there, and he has, he's separating operations, you know, I don't have a second, so, you know, it's hard to manage, a staff, he, a big hard line downstairs, and other parts upstairs. Yeah, that's right, you don't know, in a lot of other counties, you see a building that's, that's tall, they're not even a warehouse, the courthouse is used for court stuff, and they have to be, but, in some parts, by moving the supervisor of elections out there, people, it first knows, a lot of people were not happy about it, I think most everybody's very happy.
I didn't, I didn't know about that, no. Uh, they, everybody likes the supervisor of elections, though.
Yeah, they think if you have a one-stop shopping, so to speak, for your tax collector, property appraiser, um, well, maybe we haven't talked about that enough.
Well, at least you got that study done, that section study.
And, yeah. Okay, so, um, last on the list is Emergency Class First Responders Boat Dock at Keaton Beach, that seems to be a very small project, do we want to submit that for appropriation?
Well, since it's probably come from, well.
You could all do that for more, have any?
Any of the big, any of the big teams for more, or, how about the four, the four million we already have, would that, oh, God, and y'all look at that, sorry.
He puts it right there, and he's just, he's.
I think, and he, he, he's in favor, he is, I, I told him, and I don't want you to be surprised, and, and come back, here's the plan, and he said, I know, is that what you're talking about? And that is filed with me.
Now, we've heard of a visit from one of his family members, who was not in favor of it.
I don't know.
Felt like they needed to speak with him, and explain to him all of the potential pitfalls, now, I haven't heard from him since then, did this?
Well, it's, I don't remember what function we were above that, and I thought I better take it head on, because everybody's gonna get it on, you know, all the way out.
I haven't heard from him, he's out now, but I don't know if he thinks like or not, but.
My baby's family never got to change his mind, but, but it comes this night, and he's all, it's.
Um, I hate to choose a small project like that, and pick one, and pick that little one, and mix up with all the big ones.
We did that, I'm using some of the B team, and, oh, what?
Or maybe a CPI grant or something like that, they can start looking at.
But I think that's a very important project, though.
Okay, um, Doctor's Memorial Hospital Funding Assistance?
I, they all have to get.
I think the office of serious that they can't remember what.
Well, they, you know, probably work for Doctor's Memorial, I think they just want to, uh, is it a half million dollars they're asking for?
Or?
For, just general operation, I'm, somehow, I got this money, never.
No, remember they got, they got twenty-five percent of the one cent, sales tax money, during next fiscal year.
But I thought on earmarks, they wanted to have me, is that bringing that up?
I don't know.
Check that one out.
They may submit on earmarks as well, but I'll check on that, and then last on the list is Braver's Care, Sliver's Place, Nate, if you know where, I would, just, I don't, is that?
And, 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 and.
Oh, that's the one down there, um.
Longville, yeah, yeah.
No, that's the one down there, it's a thing of faith, you know, because it's all to the, the hunting camp, is that Catterbridge?
Catterbridge, yeah, Long County, that's Long County, Red, or Bridge. They, they just, I call it services of the man, they, they say land, what the ambitious fund. I'm all, all, you can get it, they close it, it's gonna give it access to it from there and all that.
So, but, while that it's not a bridge, I don't, I don't know how that works, but you know.
That's it. That, we put our attendance, so, what, what is the fact that, that I have, the one that I wanted to add to you? Um, could you, or some, some of your staff or someone, could you compile a list of pending ordinances? What they are, and, and ready, and, and just kind of keep that ongoing, so that we have a chance that people can forget about these things, and if we could just have that list and keep it updated, then that way, we don't forget. Something, it's, it's kind of a, it's, it's all on that. Now, I was gonna say, I think that we have a, a code for all the, for every, every, something, maybe, just like.
I think, I think there are places, there's discussion of a regulation or an ordinance, that I keep a separate list, so we, so.
Look, if we're working on only one, you, you don't want the list at all.
No, no, no.
It's, it's the ones that we're working on, so that, you know, we tend to forget, and.
Maybe we can add it to our master project list, so we don't, so we don't have another list to keep up with. Yeah, would that be, would that be agreeable, to do, to add it to our master project list? So, we're not another list that we keep up with.
If we know what's out there, then what it, what we approve, we'll take it all, and, you know, I think that would be helpful. Anybody else have anything? Okay, well, I want to thank everybody for being here, um, I want to thank the staff, and all of y'all are doing a great job, thank you, okay?